Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So, visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a couple of announcements. We are in public session. If anyone would like to record to this evening's activities besides the FCTV, if you just notified of the board that you are in fact doing so, we'd appreciate it. Could you come in and state your name and who you represent?
John Carlton-Fosse is my name. I may or may not actually record, but I thought I would let you know that I'm here and I would like to reserve the option to record.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. First item up tonight is the report to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. Julia Taylor.
Thank you very much for having me come.
You gave us a lot of written materials. I hope you can-
You didn't have to read it all, but-
Okay.
... plant steroids.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'm gonna just hit the high points because I'm sure you do not wish me to read it to you. But the Special Commission on County Governance, for those listening at home, was appointed by the Cape Cod Commissioners and the Barnstable County Commissioners to review the operations of the county, what services are we delivering, what could we improve, what could we add or subtract, and also to look at the actual governance issues, structure of the government. They appointed 26 members, two of whom were elected officials, me and the Speaker of the Assembly, Ron Bergstrom from Chatham. Everyone else was not an official, but some of them were former officials like Vicki Lowell, Bill Zammer, Phyllis Daye, those were some of the Falmouth people that people might know. And we had a lot of meetings, so it was pretty hard work and it was pretty well done, I think. The committee's recommendations are worth looking at for people who are interested in regional government, and anyone who'd want a complete copy could get in touch with, go to the Barnstable County website, and it's probably posted on there, and if it's not, they could contact someone and download it, call me, Julia Taylor, Julia and Elliot Taylor in the phone book, although we don't have phone books anymore, I realize. But I do have an email at jaytaylor@barnstablecounty.org. Any rate, I'm gonna just start in with a few of these things. Interrupt me if you have any questions as I'm going, otherwise I will zip through it and then maybe there will be questions. First, let's talk about wastewater, since you're gonna be hearing from the local Falmouth people, and I think you already heard from Andrew Gottlieb and did Paul, does Wiki Come also? There's been some sort of vibe, incorrect rumors, there's going to be a taxing authority established, blah, 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 by the county. Now, this is simply not possible. The county has no power to set up any kind of authority. But the commission felt that the county might be the proper vehicle if towns and citizens wanted some sort of regional approach to this pretty horrifying project and expensive project. So, if when the Cape Cod Commission's reports on the effectiveness of various systems comes forward, when the wastewater, the water collaborative report comes forward about financing options, maybe towns will feel that their ideas would fit best in some sort of regional program. If that's the case, then the county, I think we can safely say, will be very eager to respond, and it would be our top priority to, now obviously we can't finance it because we're a very modest little, but we could organize some sort of regional system. So, we're ready to do that when needed. But we don't need to be worrying about some super authority out there taxing people. That could only happen if all the towns and citizens beg the legislature to allow. A more, I think, very promising thing would be that the Cape Cod mosquito control that operates on the Cape is interested in leaving their affiliation with the state and becoming part of the county government. And the reason is that they feel that the Boston state system is way too pesticide-oriented and isn't really as modern and up-to-date and suitable for Cape Cod as they are. We heard several good reports on that. And now, just as we read in the paper about equine encephalitis, and you know, you do want a top mosquito control, and I think we have that, but it may well be that we could get it to move into the county. I wanna say something about the Cape Light Compact and the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative and their relationship with the county, because this has been somewhat controversial, at least among some people. And I have said to them that your complaints about the Cape Light Compact governance and your complaints about the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative governance are not actually something that the county and I can do very much about, because they are separate organizations with their own charters and their members are appointed by the selectmen. So, I sort of said, "You'll have to go to the selectmen and present your complaints." And you may not like that when they come, and you've probably heard from them. But I do want people to understand that these are very important, interesting groups doing important work for electric power on the Cape, but their involvement with the county has probably outgrown its original structure. And the fact that we have county employees working for those organizations without, and so they're sort of have a dual loyalty, and I personally would like to see that changed, and I'm going to, and I think Pat is interested in the project, and so that's somewhere that I think that the county can make some changes in that. But people who are interested in electric power and the selectmen need to be thinking a lot about the Cape Light Compact and the C-MAC, because it is important, and I don't think they have very much public scrutiny. They don't really answer to anyone, except each member answers to their selectmen, but I don't think that happens very much, and it probably, it's probably worth thinking about. That would be my thought. Sean O'Brien is the man at the county who works in the emergency planning, and everything I hear makes me think that he's really a terrific star in this area. And he gave a very good report about the issue of PSAPs, that's your 911 response. And apparently, a new law is coming in in 2012, which is going to require a very, a more sophisticated response. I think we're familiar with the concept of, well, I want my local response, I want my fire response, I want my police response, they know my town, they know me, they probably knew my great-grandmother. I think, though, we are probably past that in terms of efficiency and actual usefulness to get the people there fast, and we're certainly way past that being economically reasonable. So, California, I forget whether it has one PSAP or three PSAPs. But Cape Cod has over 15. So, will this happen if the county just keeps pushing? No, but will be available. I think selectmen who have worries about their budgets for the town, though, and citizens who have worries about their budget, here is a more efficient, better, technologically sound, cheaper method. And the county, again, cannot impose this, but it stands ready, committed to spending the money that would help the towns set it up that way. So, that'd be my suggestion. The emergency planning seems to be a great success, as is the Barnstable County Health and Human Services, headed by our own George Hoyfelder, so naturally, it's super-duper. Now, we come to the governance recommendations. How do we, do we want to change in how the county is run? The commission recommended, as did the, I think, the municipal association study that the commissioners had commissioned earlier, are recommending a stronger administrator. At the moment, we have an administrator and we have the three commissioners, but the power of the executive is sort of shared among those. Now, granted, we have that situation here with the selectmen and the town administrator, but I think I can safely say that the town administrator in Falmouth has a great deal more power than the county administrator. And probably, we could have a more efficient, faster turnaround, better setup with a stronger administrator. So, I'm hoping that that recommendation will be pursued by the three county commissioners. I think the Assembly would be happy to go along with that. A little more controversial, we have the recommendation by the Special Commission that the elected officials, the three county commissioners and the 15 Assembly delegates be dissolved and a single legislative group, because the administrator would now be the strong administrator, so we'd have a legislative group which would be five, seven, nine regionally-elected people. Now, on the one hand, people are used to towns, and that's what we've always had here, and so when we first set up the county in its current form, we gave each town a delegate. Now, Falmouth being a little bit on the bigger fortunate side, we get 15% of the vote. That makes it easy to influence policy. Truro can talk, they're there, but I think their vote is under 1%. There have been years of complaints from the smaller towns about that setup, but since we do have the one-man-one-vote constitutional laws, that can't be changed. Now, you really can't then, you could go to a much bigger group and one person from Truro and 15 from Falmouth, 22 from Falmouth, that gets a little unwieldy. So, I've always felt that the Assembly worked pretty well. The other criticism that has existed for years is, well, those people are just representing their town, they're not regionally oriented, and that's bad, and therefore, we should have a regionally-elected official. I'm sympathetic to that argument in principle, I agree with it in principle. My actual experience on the Assembly has not borne that out as a big problem. Certainly, everything I think about Cape Cod and county government is influenced by my years in Falmouth, by the people I know in Falmouth, my experience here, and that's what's going to influence my idea of what is good for Cape Cod. I cannot think of a time when I've been torn, "Oh, this will be good for Falmouth, but bad for Cape Cod, and so how am I gonna vote?" I've just never felt that way. I don't think that the issues we deal with are like that, and that just as I happen to live in a neighborhood in Falmouth, I don't feel my votes at town meeting have to do with that neighborhood, they have to do with my view of the town. So, I don't think we have a big problem, but there's certainly that perception, and I would not oppose a change. Falmouth will come out fine, no matter what, we'll be the big town in our region, and if someone in Falmouth is good and wants to run, they'll get elected. So, Falmouth will not go without a representative, I don't think that's a problem. But, so, I really would love some feedback from people on that, if people feel strongly about that. There's the principle, there's the reality, there's don't change if it's not broken. But there, certainly, the commission, the Special Commission, started its meetings feeling that change should take place, and they didn't change their mind, and I didn't speak out vehemently against it, because I can understand why they think that, but anyway, you're following this, I'm sure. So, that's about it for, I think that was pretty quick, no?
It was quick. All right, I'll open it up for some questions. If anyone has any questions.
Thoughts, questions? I'm open to suggestions or questions. I certainly skipped over a lot.
Doug?
What do you see as the largest advantage to this, the, making the group smaller?
Well, is it that useful having 15 people, some of whom have virtually no power, talking about things? That's one issue. Barnstable has 22% of the vote, and so when Barnstable doesn't vote the way some people would like Barnstable to vote, and if Falmouth and Barnstable vote together, then that sends people into a complete fit as unfair. So, that complaint has been tiresome to me, and so almost I'd be willing to make the change to get rid of that appearance of unfairness. So, if I'm from a, you know, if we have one district, if we had seven districts that were similar to the State House, State Rep. districts, nobody could say it wasn't fair. So, maybe that's worth it. Do I see a real difference in what happens? I don't.
Okay. Anybody else? Pat?
Well, I'll just make a comment. I think, first of all, to change the form of government would require, well, there's three or four different ways of doing it, but eventually, it has to go to the legislature and it has to be on the ballot, Cape-wide. So, it isn't an easy change, no matter what. But I think in terms of the Assembly, it's like anything else, it's not always the structure that can be an issue. It's the people who are there that really make it, that really make it work. And I have to tell you, working with the Assembly for the last four years, that you can be very proud of your representative on the Assembly. Obviously, Julie's been there for some years now, but she truly is a leader on the Assembly, and when issues get tough and it calls for a compromise, she's very, very good at that. And I have to say that, Julie, truly.
Thank you very much.
And so, it, to try to shift the change from structure to people is not always very good, because then it gets personal, and every time things get personal, then they usually go downhill. So, there are some benefits to changing the structure, as you said, by having seven or eight, five, seven or nine commissioners. The proposal was that they be policymakers and fill the legislative functions that the Assembly already does. So, it would be a combination of policymaking and legislator, but not necessarily executive. The executive powers would sit with the county administrator.
And so, one could have a more efficient setup, possibly, because you'd have one strong executive and then, say, seven policymakers, like the selectmen. So, it would be, would be very similar to what we have here. Now, you've still got town meeting dealing with the money, and that would be sort of not, not, isn't envisioned. But the difficulty of the change, I think, could absorb a great deal of political capital, and it might be that that capital would be better spent on changing some of these other projects.
I think it's also important to point out, we have another of our county representatives in the room, and that's Ron Zweig. He represents us on the Cape Light Compact. And if you remember, our representative on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative is John Cheklik. I think we pre-appointed him just several months ago.
Okay. Thank you very much, Julia, and I think one of the main things that folks out there need to realize is that they can reach out to you and provide you some feedback on what you presented today.
I would love it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is a continued hearing for change of location for Meflick's Inc., DBA Murphy's Package Store, from 303 Main Street to 410 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Mass. This was continued again from June the 11th. Just for some information for the board, good evening, sir. I wanna read a couple of things into the record if I can. We, there were a couple of issues that the board had at the last hearing. We did, in fact, take an abundance of public comment. We will keep that public comment in any and all decisions we make this evening. We also are, will provide an opportunity for public comment tonight. We received some information tonight from Aladio Gore today, and I'll read this into the record if I might. As stated in the memorandum dated June 11, 2012, this property is in a B3 zoning district, which allows retail sales. Six parking spaces are required based on the size of the store. This site never had a site plan review by the planning board. Therefore, the traffic issues have never been addressed. During certain hours of the day, the site is heavily used and parking is congested and at times difficult to find. However, as stated, this is an issue that has existed for many years. The applicant has provided the building department with a site plan showing 77 parking spaces, including three handicap spaces. Six of those spaces have been designated by the lease agreement, see attached lease, for the use of the liquor store during the hours of operation. However, the parking plan submitted does not reflect what is on-site. The dumpsters are in a different location and all the parking is not clearly identified on the ground. Although many of the parking spaces would not be allowed by the planning board under today's regulations, these spaces are nonetheless being used. Therefore, it should be required that all the spaces shown on the plan be striped in all spaces shown on the ground. The dumpsters should be located as shown on the plan, and the six spaces designated for the liquor store should be identified with signage indicating they are for the liquor store use only during the hours of operation. Now, also, town council has given this board some advice in the form of fact that if we do, in fact, grant this change of location, that we can only require what is used in specifics for this particular store. So, that would mean require that the six spaces for the liquor store be designated and be striped and be, recommend that these spaces also be clearly marked. So, the liquor store spaces, we can require, we cannot require the entire parking lot to be striped. That is based off of what town council has informed us. The board can suggest that the applicant work with the owner of the property to stripe all of the spaces in the parking lot. So, that would be what the board would, in other words, what town council, what the building commissioner would suggest, that all the spaces be marked. But the board cannot require it based on what town council said, only that the spaces that are, in fact, designated for the, for the use of the package store. I just wanted to read that into the record. We also received some information from town council. There was an issue at the last meeting that the former owner had some objection to the payment, and that is an issue that the town council has addressed to this board, and that is a private matter, and we will no longer address that. He has the alternative and the means to litigate that in any form he may seem fit. I also wanna start this evening by saying that because the name Murphy's Liquor Store has been used many times, folks have corresponded to me, that they, that I, in fact, have something or anything to do with this establishment. I don't, don't have any relatives who own Murphy's Liquor Store, it just happens to be a very popular name, so I wanna make sure that's very clear. I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal on-premise liquor license, not an off-premise license. Therefore, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Anthony Jeffrey, and I'm the current owner of Murphy's Package Store, which is located at 303 Main Street here in Falmouth. As the board is aware, the application before the board is a request to transfer that license to a location in West Falmouth, known as Unit 3, 410 West Falmouth Highway. Without being repetitive, because I think the chairman has read into the record exactly what I was gonna address initially tonight, and that was that, following the hearing of June 11, my understanding was that the loan issue before the board concerned the six reserved parking spaces that were being required by the building department. Now, what we've done to address that concern is a couple of things. We've revised the original lease, Paragraph 9 specifically, to note that those six spaces have been reserved for the package store. We've also added an addendum, myself and the owner of the property, added an addendum which the board has before, which clearly identifies those six spots and references a 2009 plan provided by the owner, which clearly indicates six spaces marked A through F at the rear of the store. So, I think, unless I've missed something, Mr. Chairman, I think we've addressed the issue of the six parking spaces being required by the building department. Now, certainly, if those spaces need to be striped or lined or somehow identified as being related to the package store, we can certainly do that, and we're happy to do that. The other issue that I had intended to address tonight was the payment issue. I won't address that, given what you've indicated and noted in the record. But I would like to note that the business has been paid in full. If it hadn't been, I think Mr. Murphy would be here, and I don't see Mr. Murphy here. So, that aside, unless there's something else that the board would like me to address or any questions that I can field from the audience, I think that summarizes what I'd like to present to the board this evening.
Okay. If you can stand, stand ready, what I will first do is address, and I just wanna also, for the record, state that we have numerous emails, numerous letters from folks in West Falmouth. It is obvious that there are a vast number of folks who have emailed this board that are not in favor of a package store or would like to see improvements, I guess would be the best scenario, improvements in the parking pattern as well as the traffic pattern at that location. There have been some positive emails. Every member of this board of selectmen has all of those emails and the written documentation, so they will, in fact, take that into account. I would open it up before we do a board discussion, any additional public comment for anybody who was not able to be heard at our last public meeting, and be happy to have you heard this evening. Great. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Alan Fleer. I lived at 411 West Falmouth Highway for the last 35 years, that's right across the street from the site. And- And again, as you mentioned, this is a B3 zoning. The use proposed is not really an issue at all. The issue really is the site. And as Aladio has mentioned, there's never been a site plan review. At one point, I believe it was in the early 90s, I was planning board member, and they redid the asphalt in front, and they started to restripe it a different way, and Mr. Curry told Astram that if they did that, they would have to come for site plan review, the striping went back to where it was originally. Now, I just, if I could approach the board, this is a picture I took probably a couple of years ago now, just want to show that this is, this road behind here is what I want to draw attention to. This is Bowman Lane, Quahog Pond Lane, and also part of the onsite circulation. There's three trucks.
If you could leave that and go, but we have a copy of this in a letter that we received from somebody, but you have to go back to the microphone, Alan. Thank you.
I would just like to point out specifically, the shadow behind the Cisco truck is actually a ramp that runs out, you know, like 12 feet, right into wherever it's supposed to be going. Again, this is a subdivision road that you're looking at here, that's Bowman Lane. This is an easement called Quahog Pond Lane. That's five houses on one side, nine on the other. This is the only access. And then, there's also the onsite circulation, which is obviously taken up by these three trucks and the big pile of lumber for the fire and the grill. Now, you know, this was almost identically like this on Friday, 10:15, 11:15 in the afternoon, in the morning, except instead of a, the Cisco truck was just like this, there was piled-up lumber, I mean stacked lumber, and a Coca-Cola truck. You know, this little way through here is the only access to all those people. It's the only vehicular access to the bike path between Chappaquaay Road and Carlson Lane. It also accesses a town-owned lot east of the bike path, I think it's over an acre, and also Salt Pond Bird Sanctuary is down at the very end of Quahog Pond Lane. Of course, Quahog Pond Lane is just an easement. The lots back there were created when you didn't have to have frontage on a real road. Now, there have been numerous changes to this property that I've witnessed over the years, none of which seem to have triggered site plan review. The most significant one was, I'd say, in the early 80s, the Newnans, Paul Noonan, Paul's pizza and his family, had the right-of-way that actually went between what was then the two buildings at this site. And that was where the original entrance was to the Beach Comber, where the entrances now used to be the fire door. And so when that was moved, Debbie Noonan and her mother agreed to move the easement to the north side of the building, the de facto access even then, and that allowed the building to be enclosed, so that any circulation out of the courtyard was effectively stopped. Okay? So, again, that makes it much worse. Subsequent to that, the old cape that was behind the restaurant was torn down and replaced with a full three-story building, slightly bumped out to the old, end of the old thresholds, so slightly larger. The access to the restaurant used to be behind it, now it's on the side. Those businesses that used to be there were taken out when the roof was held, and they poured a new slab underneath the kitchen part and relocated the kitchen for the grill. So now you have all this activity just concentrated right in this little spot here, and it's just, it's a gauntlet that I can't believe that you would approve, sending people through this to their parking places. There's no signage, there's no signage consistent with historic district commission. You know, and the reason I'm here complaining is that we have had virtually no opportunities to talk about this effort. The last time was many moons ago, when the liquor license was transferred from the previous manager to the present manager. I, you know, I just don't see why you don't believe you have the authority to require a site plan review.
And all's I can tell you is, I'm not a professional when it comes to that. I'm telling you what town council has told us.
Well, you know, if you're just going to leave us hanging, I mean, there are ways to make the owner come to the table. I mean, it's always been a pointing match. You know, it's the people own the businesses, saying it's the owner's fault, the owner says it's really the business owner's fault, you know, everyone's pointing fingers, nothing's getting done. And, you know, as any regulatory board with a decision before them, and the selectmen in particular, you have the ability to refer this matter to the Cape Cod Commission, discretionary referral, limited referral, based on the need for a site plan that's traffic, onsite issues, and possibly the historic district also. And, you know, so you do have the authority, and as easily as you voted, you can vote it away too. You know, it disappears in a second with a single vote. I just would like to see, you know, someone step to the plate on this. It really is long, long past time. I mean, it's not like I'm going out there every day, taking pictures of it, but, you know, people have trouble getting into the courtyard, they have trouble getting out, the traffic stacks up on 28, everyone's driving over the double line, going every which way. I've seen plenty of accidents there where people just pull in and then someone else pulls in behind them, you know. We're just hoping that something good comes out of it, and if you don't think you have the authority, I believe you do have the authority.
Thank you. Anybody else look like to have something to say to any, for or against? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Michael Angellini. I live at 32 Snug Harbor Lane. I'm a director of the West Falmouth Village Association. And the prior speaker indicated that the use is not an issue. In fact, it is an issue, and one thing we would like to make clear to you is that you do have the authority to deny this very clearly. If this was a beauty salon or a convenience store, you would look no further than determining whether or not zoning is proper for this use. But this is for a package store. And under the general laws, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, the question for relocation of a package store is exactly the same question that you would face if this was an application for a new license to establish a package store at this location. And the question then is, not is what is in the interest of the business owner or the prospective business owner, the question for package stores and for liquor licenses is peculiar and specific. And it states very clearly, the question is not what is in the convenience of the holder or prospective holder of the license, but what is in the public interest, what protects the common good, what serves the public need? That is the question before you. That's the only question before you, respectfully. And that's a very different issue than it is to look at the adequacy of parking spaces or the zoning. And we believe, having consulted with a number of the, doing what we do as a civic association, with a number of the neighbors and having used that facility ourselves in a number of locations, that no public need is served by this. First of all, there is no public demand for another outlet for serving, for buying packaged goods in that neighborhood, in that area. There is no such need. I don't believe you've heard any evidence of any need, of any request, other than the request of the current license holder. In the absence of any public need, you would then turn to, okay, well, in the absence of public need, is there any public convenience? Does it meet the requirements of the public? And the evidence that you've heard is, and we would emphasize this, this is a dangerous location. It is overused, it is on a straight highway. You've heard this man who lives across the street tell you from his own observation, and any of you who drive by there on any evening can view it yourselves, car is backed upon the state highway. We believe this is another accident waiting to happen. It not only does not serve the public interest, it is antagonistic to the public welfare and safety. So this is a very different issue that you face. It's as if this man came before you and said, I want a new license, and I want to establish it at that location. You would examine what public need is serviced by this, and if you, in the absence of finding it, and in the absence of finding a public interest being served, you would be compelled to deny it. And so we ask you to do that. In a different situation, we would not. This is not insular, it has nothing to do with personalities. We believe our responsibility as yours is to serve the public interest of the people who live in that area, and ask you to consider that seriously and to deny this transfer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public comments section of this evening and look for some comments from the board. Doug?
I have a question for Mr. Murphy. Are you, which door are you expecting people to use to get to this store?
Incidentally, just for the record, this is Mr. Jeffrey. It was Murphy's, but he is.
Sorry, Mr. Jeffrey.
Well, there are two. We would propose both a front and a rear entrance and exit, given the layout of the parking at this location.
Would you expect people only to park in your designated parking spaces, or would you restrict them from parking in the front parking where the post office parking is?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer. What we would propose is that the six spaces that are being reserved would be clearly marked.
But they wouldn't see them if they're in the front?
That's correct, but if I could finish, the other, the flip side of that would be that we would post signage both in the store and outside the store relative to parking for this particular retail space, so that it's understood, and we understand that there would be a learning curve involved here. But the long-term goal would be to educate our customers that they have the option, if available, to park in front, or, in my opinion, it would be much more convenient for them to pull around the rear and parking in one of the six reserved spaces, or if there are other spaces available at that particular time, to park in another open space.
Any, yes, Brad?
Well, I have looked at this, I think, very carefully, and I have read all of the emails, of which we've had many. I think I counted there are 19 emails in this packet tonight alone, plus ones that I think are copied elsewhere. But of the 19 emails that we have here tonight, there were 17 that were against the issuance of the license. And I will say that many of the comments that the neighbors made had to do with the issues of safety around the building, access egress, which are very serious issues on the parcel. I think, if, and I'll just mention the one, you require people to park in the back. If there's a tractor trailer on the side, they probably can't get to the back. I mean, I don't know. But notwithstanding all of the issues relative to public safety, the way people park, the lack of striped parking, the lack of easy access and egress, I think what I read in the emails is really any lack of a public need for a package store at this site. The people who respond, and this is the neighbors, this is the public input that we get, both written and the people who were here back in June, who testified, that that's where, I think, that's what allows the board to determine public need, is based on the comments of the people who live there in the neighborhood, as to whether or not there's a need for the store, would they use it, does it represent a convenience to them that they don't already have, something like that. So I would find that I could not support this license because of the lack of any demonstration of public need by the neighborhood.
Any other public, anyone else to report? Brett?
I have some thoughts. And I have a question. If this was any other use, if it wasn't a liquor store, let's say somebody suggested a convenience store, if a convenience store was going in here, would this even be before us?
No.
So, and B3 zoning is the least restrictive zoning. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
It is the most restrictive zoning.
No.
Most restrictive.
Most restrictive.
B2, B1 is the least restrictive.
Okay. But there could be a variety of other retail establishments that could move in here. Am I correct? All right. So, and I understand what's being said, and I hear the issues of traffic and parking and such, but it's interesting that folks are presenting us with pictures from years ago, because it proves that the problem already exists. And I think whether there's a liquor store that goes here, or whether a convenience store goes here, or whether anything goes here, that there's going to be a problem with parking, there's going to be a problem with traffic. I mean, I've been to the Chappaquaay Grill a few times, and quite frankly, and perhaps unfortunately for the Chappaquaay Grill, I don't go there very often, because it is such a pain to go parking over there. It is such a pain to get in and out of that plaza. But it's very difficult for me to make a decision based on traffic, or a problem with traffic, or a problem with parking, when it's already an issue. And I think no matter what business goes here, it's going to be an issue. I don't know what the answer to that is. There's a suggestion that maybe we need to make a referral to the Cape Cod Commission. That's a slippery slope, I think. There's a lot of businesses in town that, you open it up to one, and you can think of any number of businesses along Main Street, that it's difficult to park near, or there's difficulty getting in and around the buildings, similar situations. I wouldn't want to go down that road. I think it would open up a whole can of worms. But from my perspective, again, I think a lot of the issues that have been raised about parking and such, I think it's going to be a problem no matter what happens. I think the board could, and I'm curious as to what we can do, obviously, we can require signage for this particular establishment and the parking spaces that are assigned to it, but can we require other signage on the premises? Signs in the front of the building that say, you know, parking here prohibited for this business? I mean, there's got to be something, it seems to me, that can be done, because otherwise, this may be, as somebody noted, there may not be other opportunities. There could be another business that goes in there, and we could end up with the same problem all over again, but it would never come before this board or the planning board, and there'd never be any action that could be taken, so.
David, did you have something to say?
Yeah. I remember the first night we had discussed, I was very concerned about safety issues of parking. I'm looking at the original packet, and the packing was all against the building, and now we have four against the building and two designated ones out back. But I understand everything that's been said by the public, I understand what my board members are saying, especially you, Brent. But I've got to tell you, I was out there a few weeks ago on a Saturday, and, you know, maybe 30 years ago, or 40, in the 70s or something, things like this would have been okay. There's a lot of intersections in town that would have been okay maybe 30 years ago, but traffic has increased dramatically. And when you see roads, a right-of-way with these delivery trucks there, and I just have a, no matter what business goes there, I have a concern with it. And this is in front of us because of the nature of the license, but I, this is not something I'm going to be able to support based on reading the emails, all the pictures, and let me just say, I am not anti-business at all. I think what would have been great here is that early on into the process, if you'd had seen some of the backlash of these emails, that maybe, it's too bad we couldn't have reached out to the local village association, maybe sat with them and just, you know, conversation is something that can solve a lot of issues. I have a big problem with this right now, and I'm not anti-business, I will tell you that. People know me, understand that, but I have a very serious issue with the safety of the area, Mr. Chairman, and that's.
Okay. I'd like to make a few comments. One is to echo a little bit the gentleman from the association, really summarize that is really the only issue tonight, whether this board sees fit to issue a liquor license at this location. Town council has told us that the parking issue is, as long as it meets the parking zoning, which is the three, the six spaces, and the board can require signage for those six spaces. Council has told us that. I will say that, you know, there's a scenario out there, supply and demand. I will say that, you know, there's a scenario out there, supply and demand, and there was a convenience store at this site a year ago, two years ago, that didn't survive, because people didn't frequent the store. It was either too expensive, didn't have enough products, or because of the congestion at the site. And another store of that same caliber could go into this location, so without us having this particular hearing. So, the hearing tonight, to me, is only in fact because of the liquor license. It has nothing to do with anything else. And Mr. Flair, I appreciate where you're coming from, you spent many years on the planning board. I too don't know why this never had a site plan review. But this is not in this board's purview. This board is not able to take that up, specifically on the advice of council. So we have some parameters. I quite candidly think that the issues that have occurred over the years were issues that have occurred. You know, to get to this particular location, those trucks won't be parked there, they would be parked in the back, because there's a loading door in the back. So, you know, general information would say, no one's going to park a truck and walk halfway around the building to deliver to those other locations, meaning to the package store. Maybe it could potentially encourage the Coca-Cola truck to park in the back parking lot, because that truck is now making two deliveries, one to the restaurant and one to this location. So it might, I don't know, alleviate some traffic. Quite candidly, when it comes to the public need, the number of licenses is limited in this community for liquor stores. I don't think there are particular folks that are that close. If this particular establishment cannot make it and cannot have business, the reason they're moving from Main Street is because there is no parking. It's very simple. You can't pull up to this establishment on Main Street and get out and go in and buy packaged goods and leave, because there is no parking. The reason the location wants to leave, and I'm presuming this, I haven't spoken to the applicant, is because he's looking for a site that would, in fact, that would fill a need. Now, if the need's not filled, I'm sure he would be back before this board to move somewhere else. So with that in mind, the word alcohol is not a paralyzing word to me. I've been in it my entire life. And for those folks who consume it and do it responsibly, it is something that does not affect the public. You know, for establishments that operate and sell alcohol, packaged goods, in an appropriate manner, it is probably less hazardous than some of the tobacco stores that we might have that are affecting our young. So I don't have a problem with that. With that in mind, something eventually will go into this location. It may not be this particular establishment, it may be something else. But something will go there, because it is a storefront, it is vacant, it may sit there for quite some time, I don't know. But I would tend to think that, you know, we would, I would suggest that maybe some improvements would be made, meaning between the tenant, Mr. Jeffries, to encourage the landlord to stripe the entire parcel, to stripe all of the back parking lot. We can require him to stripe his spaces and clearly mark it with signage. That is what town council has told us. So if we did those things, I could conceivably consider voting for this.
Can we require, the applicant mentioned, there are two doors, there's one in the front and one in the back.
There is, correct.
Is it possible for us to require that only the rear door be used and that signage be placed in the front saying, "Entrance and rear," which would effectively discourage people from using the front and going to the rear of the building?
It's a, I'm sorry, it would be a safety issue, I believe.
Well, I don't think we could block it, but I think-
Not saying block it.
Block it, but you could put a bar on it, you know, emergency exit only.
Exactly. Can we require that? Is that within our purview?
Town council has not given us a ruling on that. If you'd like to take it for a week and ask that, that would be fine.
Mr. Murphy?
Wait until we're done with public comments, sir. I've already taken public comment.
It's not a public comment, I'm the owner of the shopping center, but I have something to say.
If you're talking on behalf of the applicant, you're more than happy if you'd like you to talk. We're no longer taking any public comment, but if the applicant would like you to speak on his behalf, that's fine.
What are the nature of the comments, Chairman? [laughter] What do you say?
I was looking. But I didn't see him.
Why?
Well, as Mr., as the chairman has said, that the public comment section has ended, so I'm not, I'm happy to have you come up and speak, but I'm not quite sure what it's in connection with. Is it the parking? Is it this particular?
It's in connection with the parking and many other things that folks have said.
If you'd like to speak on your behalf, that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Leonie, come right up there, please.
First, Mr. Chairman, did the members of the board get my letter?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we did.
Fine. So they've had an opportunity to read that letter. I just want to add to that letter that in the many, many years, thirty years, that I've owned that shopping center, regarding Mr. Flair, who lives directly across the street, I've waved to him many times, and he's waved back to me, but he's never had any comments to me about anything in the shopping center. I have, I'm proud of what I've done in that shopping center in the thirty-five years that I've owned it. It was nothing but a bar and a motorcycle joint when I first purchased it. And the opening in the middle of the shopping center was hardly wide enough to take a car. It was primarily used as motorcyclists and drugists. And my wife said to me, when I sat in that place thirty-five years ago, "Why, why in God's name would you buy this, this atrocity?" But I saw a lot of potential to it. I've lived in West Falmouth for over fifty years. We belong to all the clubs, tennis and Bowman's Beach Club and so forth, and we have many friends there, regardless of the complaints and so forth that have been written. In response to the residents and the condition of the building, I have a full-time contractor who's a resident of the building, who takes care of any and all problems around the property. Any one of the tenants, none of the tenants are appearing here, so they're obviously not concerned about who's going in. There have been vacancies there. The convenience store, yes, was there for two years. Convenience store should attract a lot of people, a lot of parking. There was no complaints or hearings about the convenience store. This is all about liquor. That's what it's about. It's really not about the parking. The folks, the older folks, like myself, who try to pull into the parking lot in the front and run into the post office, and then try to back up, and they can't turn their head around, that's a problem for them. As far as the access on the right side, there's a road there that's not on my property. There's a road adjacent to where the trucks park, and people can get into those few houses over the railroad tracks, even if there's a truck parked there. Let's see, what else I can add to this. And, you know, we had a tenant in this space for two years, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, they built the building, the bridge in West Falmouth. They had three or four trucks parked outside most of the day in the backyard. There was never any complaint about them being there, and they actually attracted more activity than, I don't know what a liquor store attracts, but it's mostly in the evening. When the post office is closed at five o'clock, and as John Reed, the owner of the Chappaquaay Grill, said, "There's tons of parking out back after five o'clock when the post office is closed." As far as, you know, plans, my wife and I went to the planning board, because we wanted to dress up the front of that parking, that parking, because of the crisscross parking there, and people backing into each other. And we proposed a green area out front, so that you're not in the bushes and trees, and there'd be angle parking along Twenty Eight A. That would solve the backing up problem, as far as backing into each other. But they weren't interested and turned us down. So we've continued to improve the property, there's been all new lighting installed in the front. As far as the liquor store goes, he's a resident of West Falmouth, that should be a big plus. He has the answer to the people in the neighborhood. The landlord's been here for fifty years. I would expect the applicant to perform in a professional manner, as the other tenants have been doing for many, many years. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you one question, sir?
Sure.
One of the issues that the building commissioner brought up, and this board cannot require-
Right.
-was the striping of the back parking lot.
Right.
Is that something in your plans in the future?
We re-stripe the parking lot every two or three years. We've been doing it for thirty years. If it needs it, it will be done. If that's something that the board, you don't have to ask us to do it. I'll take a good look at it, and if it needs striping, whether the tenant goes in there or not, it will be striped.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Pat, you had some-
I just have one more comment. I just, not for you, Jerry, actually. Thanks. Related to Brent's, some of Brent's concerns is that, you know, when we look at a liquor license, the only reason we really look at it is for the public need. And in looking back at some of the other applications that we have had in the past, when people come in for a package store license, or some, mostly a new license, not a change in manager, you ask, who supports the license, or who is opposed to the license? And oftentimes, there are very few people that actually speak against it. And what that is an indication to us is, is that there is public support, that the public believes that there is a need for that license to be in that location. And the only driving factor here for us in terms of public need is that there is a lack of public support for the license, based on the emails and the comments that have been made at our last meeting, and just the one or two people tonight. So I think that's what we go by. Now, if somebody wants to put a cleaner, is there a convenience store? That's strictly a business decision on their part, whether they think they can be a successful business in that location. But for us, the package store piece of it is really based on the public need. And if there isn't a demonstrated public need, that sends a message to us, and that's my point, that's where I'm coming from. All the other issues aside, I'm very obviously concerned about them, and Mr. Leonie said that, you know, he can make some of those improvements. That's a side issue, but it's not the driving issue for us tonight. Our only legal authority is to base our decision on public need. That's the way I look at it.
One last question, before Mr. Leonie got up. Mr. Putnam was speaking in regard to the entrance. Would you be willing to make the entrance in the rear of the store versus the front of the store, and use that as a means of egress, meaning a way out?
Yes.
That was a question that you could ask. Okay, any other comments from the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion, or whatever the board would like.
I'll make a motion to deny the license.
Motion on the floor to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Yeah, I just have it, sorry.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a report from the Water Quality Management Committee, through the Board of Select. You're up, sir.
Eric Turgington, Chairman of the Water Quality Management Committee, and we will be mercifully brief, I think, because we want to leave a lot of time for a dialogue with the board. A week or so ago, I think you all were given copies of the draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan.
Thanks for a lovely weekend.
Which I'm sure all of you read from cover to cover. If you read Volume Two, you do better than most of us. It's largely a compendium of appendices. Volume One has a fair amount of background material that isn't necessarily worth repeating tonight, but it does have a couple of things that we want to run through briefly, just so the public is up to speed on this dialogue. In Section Seven, that really is the guts of what our committee and its predecessor committee, the review committee, have been doing for the last two and a half years, which is designing a plan for Falmouth estuaries that's a Falmouth plan, not one that's dictated by the DEP, or dictated by some outside entities, but dictated by what the people of Falmouth think they need and think they can afford. And it's a very different plan than the one that came to this board two and a half years ago. That was the famous $600 million plan, which basically said sewer everything from the Heights over to Wacoit, down south of Twenty Eight, and then when you're done with that, sewer a couple hundred million dollars more north of Twenty Eight. Well, that plan, this board wisely discarded, and the review that's taken place in the last two and a half years has produced this new plan. We're going to, I'm going to spend five minutes on the, sort of the big picture part of it. Virginia Vallee is going to spend five minutes on the financing part of it, and our vice chairman, Steve Rafferty, he's going to spend five minutes on the alternatives that are included in it. And at that point, we will, the whole committee is here, and we'd be happy to have a dialogue on any subject that you desire. The recommended plan here, it's a twenty-year plan, but it's, in some ways, it's a forty-year plan, because we're specifically laying out the first twenty years. But we recognize that it's going to carry on long beyond that. The first usual thing about this plan is that it leads off with demonstration projects of non-traditional wastewater nitrogen management tools. And Steve Rafferty is going to run through each one of them in a fashion, but these are what the town meeting told us to do a year ago, about last April. They authorized these, and this board has been diligently pursuing them, as has the committee, and we're moving ahead on those. The other piece in here talks about expansion of the Blackface Chapel Road Wastewater Treatment Plant. That is not an immediate concern by any means. It's in here because it has to be there. But in real life, what this plan proposes is searing only the section of the Heights and Maravista that were in the town's plan thirty years ago, essentially. It's a section of town that's the most densely populated, it has the highest concentration of businesses and homeowners, it's the easiest one to sewer. If there's any part of town that's going to be cost-effective to sewer, it is that one. And that's the only one that is in this plan right now. It would produce 270,000 gallons a day of additional septic. Our treatment plant is extremely capable of handling that amount and more, so any additions to the treatment plant would not be happening anytime soon. As I say, it only includes collection of septic in that one single area.
Sewage.
Sewage. In that one single area. The other thing this plan does, and this is significant, is that this, along with the settlement that we just reached with the regulators, takes the burden, the previous requirement of searing all of West Falmouth Village off the table. The town, West Falmouth, and the Coalition for Citizens Bay and the DEP have all agreed, we don't need to do that if we do some of these other things. That's a $24 million item that is not in this plan. Third piece is, okay, what do we do with the 280,000 gallons that we're going to be collecting from the Heights and Maravista? And the answer to that is, we have a number of options available. The most immediate one that we're recommending pursuing is the so-called Site Seven. It's right adjacent to the existing treatment plant. It should be able to take that load without causing any great, or any impact on any of the waters nearby. If that turns out not to be the case, we'll move on to look for another spot. But right now, that looks like the most viable spot. The so-called steamship is already swasped a lot. That is the essence of the plan we're bringing before you here. It's not $600 million, it's not $300 million. The capital cost of what I- The capital cost of what I just described to you is about $44 million. Now, there will be other capital costs, because we're talking about opening Born's Pond and things like that. But the bottom line is, this is a very stripped-down version of what was proposed two and a half years ago, or even what the review committee proposed. It's what we think the people in Falmouth are ready to do.
Virginia?
I'm going to touch on the highlights of the financing plan, which in your book, or volume, is more or less summarized on this large spreadsheet. This is basically the financing plan out all the way to 2040 that was presented to the Board of Selectment prompted by the review committee, developed by Peter Boyer in 2010. And it originally was just this black and white small spreadsheet, which we've now elaborated to some degree, and there have been some minor adjustments to it. But we are basically using the stain strategy that was presented to the Selectmen and accepted by the Selectmen in 2010, when this initial review of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan started. It is based on a key strategy that the town has old debt, that old bonds, that are at various points in time paid off, and the cost of those bonds is already built into the tax rate. And so at the time the old bonds are retired, if the town decides, this is the town meeting, vote, plus a ballot vote, if the town decides to issue new debt, you have a financial mechanism to fund the needs of the town. Our job as the wastewater, well, as the Water Quality Committee, has been to look at the wastewater piece. And we recognize that there are other needs of the town. And so in presenting this information to you, we have given you the dollar amounts, what we've called the size of the window. This does not necessarily mean that all of the wastewater projects, whether it's inlet widening, or permeable reactive barriers, or searing, will use all of that window. But it is important for the town to know when those windows occur, because they only open, the bond only retires once, and once it's retired, you would then have to go through the whole process of re-raising the debt if you don't take advantage of those points in time. So in laying out this spreadsheet, we wanted that to be very clear to the Board of Selectmen and the management of the town. The second key piece and strategy for funding for whatever projects the town decides was application to the state for what's called a state revolving fund loan, SRF loan. That loan comes in two varieties. It is either a 0% loan or the standard 2% loan. One of the decisions the town will have to make in the next year is, do we want to shoot for the 0% or do we want to shoot for the 2%? The 0% loan requires additional efforts to be made by the town, and the most significant one is that we need a flow-neutral bylaw, sometimes called a nutrient-management bylaw, sometimes called a growth- or land-use bylaw. But basically, what the state is saying, in order for us to give you, it's half a 0% loan instead of paying more, paying 2%, you need to meet a higher hurdle, higher test. And we have a procedure that you must go through, an analysis of all of the water, all of the water used in the particular area that's being benefited by this loan. We need to get to the bottom line, adding up all the residential parcels and all the commercial parcels, what's the total amount of water used, and then passing some sort of town bylaw, yet to be hammered out, that would keep that flow the same, so that if the area were ultimately sewered, or we had permeable reactive barriers, we would guarantee that there would be no additional growth because of the, because the searing went in or the other projects. So that's a key decision that the town will have to make a year from now in Fall Town Meeting. Our window of opportunity, our next really key milestone, is next spring, where there is a total of about $9 million in old debt that will be retired. And of that $9 million, a portion would be needed for wastewater projects. Moving farther out, another year, to 2014, will be the last and major window in this decade for doing town projects. It is calculated that with a 30-year bond, we would be able to bond as much as $90 million worth of projects. They would not all be built in the same year. They would be spread out over the remainder of this decade. The town would probably be looking at inlet widening, permeable reactive barriers, searing, and there is some question about whether it would also fund some of the other projects, whether it's eco-toilets or demetrifying systems. Still a question of whether they would be eligible. But nonetheless, the town has enough funding through the existing financing to do design and permitting, but we do not have enough funding to do construction. And so the town will need some sort of state revolving fund loan, and we will need to decide how much and whether we go for 0% or 2%. The last funding source and major decision that the town is going to need to make is the matter of betterments. If you have a traditional sewer system, there is state law and established practice where a portion of the costs are allocated to the abutters, to the people who are directly benefited by the sewer. It becomes a little more difficult to figure out if you put 1,000 feet of permeable reactive barrier into seco shores, how many people upstream actually benefited from that. It's, we're moving into new ground. There's been a lot of discussion about whether we really need a betterment, whether the costs should all be on the tax rate. All of that conversation needs to be held, and the town needs to make a decision by spring 2014, when we make our final application to the state for how much we want, what projects we're going to fund, and what's the funding picture. It is an enormous amount of information to absorb, dealing with all of these finances. We're required, in preparing this plan, to look out that far. In fact, we're required to look out and sort of supposedly solve the whole problem. What the committee has tried to do is look at what's going to happen in this decade. When is there funding available, and what are the decisions that need to be made if we are to apply for a loan or not, and what kind of loan? The bottom part of that spreadsheet does take you all the way out with the other remaining times when there will be funding opportunities. That's in 2025, 2030, and 2035. But really, in terms of what are the decisions, what's the work that the town and the Board of Selectmen have in front of us? It's really the upper portion, and it's this decade. That's the highlights of the funding, and, you know, when we get to the question and answer, we'll be glad to talk about any particular piece that you want to discuss.
I'm Steve Rafferty, and I'm the Vice Chair on the committee. First off, I want to thank you all, because I think over the last several weeks, you've been getting portions of this plan coming before you in the forms of RFPs for your authority to put out on the street to pursue various parts of the project. Eric started off by pointing out that several years ago now, we had a plan that was, in essence, to sewer everything, and we're now down to a report in front of you that we'd like to submit to the state that says, we're only gonna sewer the area around the Heights. But that leaves open what happens to the rest of these areas. And we are suggesting in here to the state, this plan that we're asking to approve tonight, that there are a number of other elements that are not sort of a one-shot deal like a sewer, that have some potential and nor proven benefit for either consuming nitrogen, reducing the amount of nitrogen going out, or increasing biological activity for uptake. The RFPs that have come before you on this, and those are for the aquaculture component, the permeable reactive barrier component, and the eco toilet component, these are all, if you were to get down to the details of it, really are predicated upon over the next year and a half to two years, being able to gather critical information as to what's the likely real cost for reducing each pound of nitrogen, so that we can then start comparing do shellfish competitively work against sewers, or does a combination of shellfish, permeable reactive barriers, and eco toilets achieve that? We don't have those detailed answers today, and that's why we've got the demonstration projects. And we've outlined those in here as part of this plan. To reiterate, perhaps for those that are watching on camera or whatever, the aquaculture component really says, we know that shellfish take up nitrogen. The question then becomes, how many areas can be cultivated and not compete for other ongoing existing resources in those bays? And what does that whole system look like, and what's the risk over time that that will not be a sustainable year-to-year number, and to what extent will the state say, why it might be a high one year, it might be a little lower the next? Nevertheless, we think that even if you can't achieve the entire goal right away, the more you can reduce or consume nitrogen each one of these bays, the bays will start to appear better and function better. The permeable reactive barrier is a system of putting wood chips in the ground. It sounds fairly simple, but you have to know where to put them. And it's by and large not a really well-proven-out technology as to what really, really does happen. I don't think technically there's an argument that it's doing something. The question is, how much does it do over how big an area? And what does it really cost to install it in an area, and how many homes are picked up? So we've got a demonstration project to go down that path and identify the best areas. We believe one of those will be in West Falmouth as part of the settlement agreement, to perhaps pick up and cut off some of the flow from the homes in West Falmouth in a designated area, plus part of the plant loom, improve that quality over there, and keep the health of that system intact. We're hoping to find another location on one of the southern estuaries over the course of a study over the next year or so, that cost-effectively can proceed forward. But as Virginia put out in the financing, you have to put these together as to what it costs and finance out of the next block of money. The eco toilet folks in our committee have worked diligently. They've worked hard. This probably involves the biggest challenge in terms of, it's a change in sort of social views and social attitudes. I come before you tonight as also a member of the Board of Health. I will tell you that we just had a vigorous debate from a homeowner that would like to convert their homeowner home over to composting toilets, because they see that as a way to improve the use of their home in a fairly restrictive area. So I think there is a message out there, and it's starting to take hold, how fast it will take hold and how far it will spread, and where that stands in terms of cost-effectiveness. And by and large, the big challenge there is to avoid something called checkerboarding, where you have 10 homes out of 50 homes that have made one decision, and you have another 40 homes that you need to do something with. So that's the big challenge going forward. But we had an organized workshop, state and federal regulators participated. They are very optimistic, I think, that we are on a path that has the potential for success, and they are anxiously waiting to see where we go forward and have been very supportive. Lastly, I'm gonna touch upon inlet widening. It's a fairly simple concept. If you make a bigger opening to the inlet, you get more flushing action and reduce the area that might have to receive treatment. The reality is, once you open up the inlet, things change, and there is a fair amount of engineering and understanding and making sure that you don't create a problem by trying to solve the problem. It's been done before. There's one out on the vineyard. I believe there's one down in the Parker River end in Yarmouth that's being done. So there's a little model to follow there, but it takes time. There's a lot of permitting involved. And so again, that comes down the way. And lastly, there's another component having to do with stormwater and what runs off when it rains. Town's already involved with the NPDS Phase One and Two Stormwater Plant. We are looking to integrate the work we're doing with them, help to get better definition. And again, that may be a lot more public education than hard construction. That's the gist of these other parts. But the real key here is, if you go back to your schedule, there's two or three dates over the next 20-year period where each time we're suggesting, you come back and see your success, where you've learned things and make decisions. Are we going to go with reactive barriers in some areas? Can we encourage aquaculture in others? What's the success so far with eco toilets, perhaps as an area of town or incentives to target it to? Is the inlet widening working out? And cumulatively, how much over time will that help us to minimize having to further extend the sewers, further increase the size of the treatment plant or the outfalls or the groundwater discharges associated with it? And that's my summary. You ready?
Thank you, Stephen. As I said, we're all here and happy to engage in dialogue with the board.
I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions, but I also wanted to make a couple of comments first. I think your committee has done an excellent job. We've gone from the shock and awe that folks had a few years ago with the numbers down to something that is more manageable, and people can see how we can slowly make improvements moving through this. I think one of the things I've always preached in this is to break the problem down, put it out that where folks could see improvements slowly, 10-year cycles, 10-year increments. I do want to, you know, be right up front in that I don't agree with the financing plan. I don't agree with mortgaging or committing the town's future to all of these windows of opportunities strictly for wastewater. This is a large community. We have a lot of needs, and each and every project is, in the next 40 years, is gonna have to stand on its own. I appreciate your committee. If I were on the committee, I would take every window of opportunity as we move forward. But it's something that I can't support putting in writing to the state, saying that we're gonna use all windows of opportunity. We have other needs in this community, and because a board voted in 2010 when I wasn't on the board, I surely am not gonna go along with, you know, dictating what the future of this community's borrowing needs are. We're gonna have years that might not match up when those windows might come in. We might have to do other things. As we move forward, we surely can look at windows of opportunity, but to basically take all the windows of opportunity as we move forward and put them aside and say this strictly for wastewater, in my idea, would be selling the community short. I think it's gonna have to be a balanced approach as we move forward. And that is not a slight at each and any one of you, but I'm trying to do what I think is in the best fiduciary responsibility as a leader in this community who represents all factions of the community. Wastewater is an important issue. We also have drinking water that's an important issue. But if you talk to folks who want a senior center, that's an important issue. There are a lot of issues as we move forward, that all things have to be on the table each and every year as we move forward, and they all have to be in balance as we go forward. With that being said, I just wanted to throw that out there before we, you know, go ahead.
I just respond briefly. We actually agree with you on that. Our premise here is, we would never want to go to the voters and say, we want to raise your taxes. So we are saying, we'll go to the voters when these windows of opportunity appear. But we are not saying that all the resources that are available at those windows should go to wastewater by any means. We agree completely. The town has other needs, and we expect those other needs to be part of the package. But sometimes in this volume, that is not expressed as clearly as that, but that is our intent.
Right. And quite candidly, I'd like to see that adjusted in this before we issue it to the state. Like on 7/3, when we talk about, you know, background, and we talk about the next 30 years is the issue, the new debt bonds in amounts that matched retiring old debt bonds in the past decade. The Falmouth voters have approved various debt exclusions under the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called. As that exclusion debt is paid off, new excluded debt of an equal amount can be issued after a two-thirds vote at town meeting and majority vote at the ballot. Now, we're laying this plan out to the state. We're saying to the state that over the next 30 years, in every one of these windows of opportunity, that's how we're opportunity, that's how we're going to fund this.
But not all of them. You're saying, you're saying not all the money that's being retired would go to wastewater. It's just the timing of it would be when the debts.
There is going to be a mixed balance. And by saying that all of our windows of opportunity, as it says here, would go to wastewater, to me is selling the folks in this community short, because we don't know what's going to happen in 10 years. We didn't know we'd be in this situation 10 years ago. So...
If that's what's being implied, I agree with you slightly, but I didn't read it that way.
And I think that's important to take that out of there. We know we're going to have to bond this issue. Period. We are going to have to bond this. Whether it fits into windows of opportunity or not, it would benefit us all if it, in fact, did, and proper planning on the town's part and your committee's part, to bring forward these issues when those windows of opportunity would be forward, but to spell it out to the state that we're going to take advantage of those windows, to me, is going to provide a feeding frenzy in this town. Folks are going to say, how about my project? I'm already hearing it from folks. How about the things that I have for capital needs moving forward? And I'm not going to be, you know, short-stated. The plan itself is awesome. We're going to have to pay for this, one way or another, whether it be in retiring debt, or a bond issue, or something of that nature. But to spell it out and say we're going to use all the windows of opportunity, to me, is not something that I want to do.
Nate Weeks from GHD is here, and he's taking notes as we speak. And I think as he gets the sense of the board, he may be able to come forward with the kind of modifications that he thinks he's hearing from the board.
That's at least my input. We're going to open that up to the rest of the board. But I'm also interested in the zero-growth scenario that we're talking about. Are we saying that if someone had a property for the zero-interest loan, the town would apply for versus the 2% loan? Are we saying that we would put forward a zero-water growth, that someone who owned a piece of property would never be able to develop it? Or would we do something similar as in Silver Beach, where we said, if you owned a piece of property, you'd at least get the three-bedroom type of scenario there? Can I ask that question?
I think our intention was to explore what that language in the 0% loan statute really implies. And if it really implies something that we don't want to do, we won't go there. Because I agree, there are ways to deal with growth that the Falmouths would like, and there may be ways in this statute that are too onerous for Falmouth to accept. And if that's the case, we would do without the 0% loan.
Okay.
But that would be entirely up to the town and the town meeting and the selectmen.
Okay. Mr. Swire, do you have something to say?
Keep in mind, I want the board to be able to ask questions, so...
I'll just take, I guess, a couple of things. In terms of weaving your way through the report, there's just a couple of things I'd like to point out, and that concerns, following on what Virginia said about the financing, and what you've just raised about the future needs. When we look at the report, if you look at section 7.2, we can see that over the years, over up to 40 years, say, there's going to be borrowing of about, the estimate in this is $300 million, which is about $12 million per year. But when we look at this, and that's just for Phase One and Phase Two, I just want to be sure you're aware of this, that in section 6.6.3.2, which is a lot of details in this report, it states that for, even if we do all of that, for section four, for Little Pond, Great Pond, and Born's Pond, we still wouldn't meet the TMDL. So we won't reach the target with that investment to the year 2040. And this is just something to understand, that that element, and then there's the conceptual water quality compliance area, which is to the north of Route 28. So all of this is something to keep in mind, that this, we are in dire needs in this town, basically, with regard to the water quality issues, and we need to move forward. And that up to 2040, according to this plan, we still won't reach the TMDL, and three of those, three of the four estuaries, Green Pond, would be reached. So this can fit well with what the state's looking for, and are moving forward, and what we're working with. At the same time, as the town, if, for example, as Steve Rafferty just said, if the shellfish demonstration works really well, this may be something we want to really push forward, and to go ahead, because it may not really cost much, because if it makes money, it can move forward, basically. So we're going to have to look at this as a roadmap, moving in two directions at the same time, not parallel paths necessarily, because we're talking 2040. It's a long time, and still not to reach the target is the issue. So I just want you to be sure that you've got a sense of where this plan can take us.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the board here for discussion. Pat, you had to handle it.
I just wanted to make a point now of something that we should keep in mind for a later time, but it has to do with the windows of opportunity when the, when the tax, you know, when the bond payments have been paid off and there's new debt. And that is the unused levy capacity. I mean, if there were a time when that money becomes available, and for whatever reason the town would want to choose not to use it at that particular year, then it would fall under the category of unused levy capacity, and there are impacts on that if you wait too long to use it, because then it increases the tax rate on homes. But I think it's something that we should keep in mind and have in our material, or in our policies, that if it does come up, that we have some basic understandings of what it means, and how it could impact homeowners if we chose to go that route on a particular year. The other question I had was the public comment period. Once we vote this, I mean, when we vote this, it immediately starts the time clock on the public comment period. And my question is, how long does that last? Because not only will the state be looking at public comments, but there will be public hearings and opportunities for us to maybe even amend this draft during the public comment period? Is that possible? Who can...
Nate Weeks, the town's consultant here.
It's 90 days.
Oh, 90 days.
Oh, it's 90 days. And while people are commenting on it, that can still have further revisions during that 90-day period?
This is the draft.
The draft.
There'll be backing and forthing between the state and the town over this whole document. We're basically sending up our version of how we think that things ought to be. They will come back with their own ideas that we may want to resist, we may agree with some of them, but it'll be a dialogue with the state, and with the public comment coming all through the process.
Well, see, I ask the question because if, during the public comment period, something does come up that looks maybe better or not, or shows us that maybe we need to modify something in some way, that we're able to do that. So in other words, once this leaves the table, when we vote on it, it doesn't mean that it is still a done deal, because there is still a public comment period where changes can be made. That's what I want to say, that we're not, it's not locked in cement the minute we vote on it.
Could I give you what the timeline is for this process? Because I could not find in this document exactly what now happens in the next five months. Virginia? Maybe I missed it in the...
No, it's quite all right. There's a lot in here. The best description of that is Table E-Fest, well, that's the executive summary. If you do it there, or if you're in, it's the same table as in Chapter Seven. And it's, I'll show you what it looks like. It's the one that looks like this.
Oh, yeah.
So if we're on that page, the first section that's in blue, all right, is going to go to the issue that you raised, Doug. We have tried to lay out, we've developed it, we've sent it to the selectmen, Item Three, Selectmen Review and Vote. And we had theoretically finished tonight on September, oh, sorry, July 16th. It then gets submitted as a draft to the state, and then the state reviews it, and we have just blocked out more than the 90 days, so it goes, well, it looks like it's exactly the 90 days, to October 15th. And we will be getting comments back from the state, that's both the Cape Cod Commission and DEP. We will need to respond to those comments, and we've planned to do that by the end of September, oh, sorry, end of November. We will need to bring those comments to you, again, for review and approval before it gets submitted back to the state. Then they review again, and we ultimately end up with a final CWMP. And we are hoping that at the end of the process, the document that we need is called a certificate from the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. And we are hoping that that document will be generated by the end of March before town meeting. It's not required for town meeting, but it would be really useful to say, we, the town, have had our conversation with the state, we know what our next particular steps are going to be, what particular projects we're going to immediately focus on, and the certificate will discuss that.
Thank you, Virginia. I think that's important for all of us to know, including the public, that we have this period of time where all this can occur, and that we shouldn't, we don't need to delay on this end in order to accomplish what we can accomplish at the end of the response period.
I really think it's also important to say to town meeting members and the town as a whole, that this is a big issue, environmental issue, for the town. As Mr. Murphy has said, we've tried to look at it in manageable pieces, and it's something that's going to go on for a long time. But we're trying at this point to take the next step. We've been talking about this now for three years. The data started being collected back in 2007, so it's been a long time to get to this piece of paper that's in front of you.
Okay. Everything they've said is good, but I do want to pick this up a little bit. In a lot of other communities, when a plan like this comes forth, it's a very, very fixed plan, and that's what you saw the first time. Ultimately, what you folks are being asked to vote on tonight is a plan that says we're going to sewer around Little Pond, and we're looking at a lot of other things. When Eric talked about this being a Falmouth plan, that's a very interesting component. And in fact, every time there's a change in the project, you wind up creating a piece of paper that's called a notice of project change. And we've actually, in this plan we've given you tonight to review and vote on, have created, if you will, an outline that we hope the state adopts along with us, to say, we're only doing a small piece now, we're looking at several other things. And we have these dates and times that come back, and each one of those dates and times, whether it's at the end of the draft or the final review process right here, or two years from now, when we have results of demo projects, are another time when we go back to the state and say, we have a notice of our project change. And under this whole permitting process, there's a decision that might get made that says we're going to ask for it to be what's called a major and complicated project, which sounds onerous, except it creates a better review environment to be able to make changes along the way. So this flexibility to change is really built into the proposal that we are putting forward in our draft plan. It's based upon ongoing changes as we learn more about what the town can afford to do, and what is working that we want to implement more of.
Thank you for that. That's very encouraging.
Doug, you have any questions?
No.
David?
Just a quick one. I guess it would be maybe for Steve. How far along are we with the nutrient management bylaw in the Board of Health? Is it, is that a bad question?
It hasn't gotten to the Board of Health yet.
I thought they originally were...
I believe it came before the Board of Health, before this board appointed me to the Board of Health. And in the entire time I've been sitting on the Board of Health, I think if we've mentioned it at all, it's been very much in passing. So as Eric pointed out, it's a challenge in front of us, how to deal with this. I'm going to change it differently. It's a flow-neutral issue. Flow-neutral is the phrase to start using. If you want a 0% loan, you have to come up with a plan to not increase the amount of flow of wastewater out of the given area. They don't tell you how to do it.
Okay. Pat, you have a little...
I have one other question. There are some pages in here that are marked superseded. What does that mean? Superseded? There are pages that say superseded? Like, I just saw one, here's one. Page, it's Table 5-6 in the summary of sludge management alternatives? But there are others in the document as well.
Yep. You bring up a good point. There's been years and years of evaluations that have gone into this. And instead of sort of throwing away all of the old, we've reported it, because it represents very good work. But on the tables that have been superseded, we have identified that they have been superseded. And so for the very interested reader who really wants to understand the history and fully get a solid understanding of what's been evaluated before, it's all there. But it is also identified that certain cost tables have been superseded as part of the decision-making that's been done by the committees that have gone forward and evaluated the work.
So we're saying we didn't need to read that section.
Oh, yeah.
That would have been the shortest, shorter...
Now you tell me.
I know. I think that's one of the books.
I'm sorry you didn't tell you that before.
Okay. Brett?
I'm glad I know that now, because I don't think I got to that page yet.
You can skip the whole Volume Two if you want to.
Well, the only thing is, I don't want to, and I'll, I just want to point out, and I'm glad Doug had asked the question about the timeline, because it does note in here that these documents would have been sent to us three weeks ago. We got this one week ago. And I know obviously things are fluid and they change, and so I just put it out there for the board's consideration. I'd like to have another week with this before I...
There is no vote on this.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because I, you know, I don't know what the public has seen, but we've got this volume, we've got this volume, and then, of course, we had this volume, but this was just tonight's business, but was outside of these volumes. And I honestly didn't have enough time to get through all of it. There was another point. There was a nutrient management bylaw that was proposed a few years back, and to some controversy on town meeting floor, and it was sort of put on the shelf, I think, along with some of the original plans for sewer-ing, just in order to iron out some of the issues and concerns. I'm just looking at the other things I have. I don't think I was looking for, I don't think this document's on the town's website yet. Am I correct, or...
I've tried.
Okay, so there are a few other folks saying it's not available as well. And I would like to, I understand, obviously, there's going to be a public comment period, but it would be nice to see this on the town's website and available to the public, even before we start taking any votes. So those are just my thoughts for the moment.
And I'd like to go back a little bit, because if we're going to put this on, even though this is a draft, so that you can send it to the state, I'd like to go back to that other issue. Is your group willing to change that language about the windows of opportunities?
Well, at this point, it's in your hands, and you can do what changes you want. We'd be happy to discuss it with you in terms of the wording and how you want to phrase it. But it's the board's plan after tonight, or after, you know, when you get it to vote on.
Brett?
I'd certainly like to see some clarification there, because I agree with you. It's, I think there's enough ambiguity there that the state, somebody at the state could interpret it the way Mr. Murphy suggested it could be interpreted. And then, of course, I think the fear is, is that then we're locked into committing ourselves to those windows of opportunity, when in fact, as noted, we all agree that there are other priorities that the town has, and we're going to have to balance those as we go along, so...
So if you can, we were, this board was talking about trying to take this back up. I don't know, next week before your vote, is it possible that your group can rework that section of that?
We're meeting on the 19th, so we certainly could address that, and come up with some language that reflects what we've heard tonight.
So that we change the draft before we vote it? Okay.
Sure.
Can I ask a question? Five points, a question on that. There are various ways to change this draft that's in front of you. There could be an errata sheet, there could be a cover letter, there could be a reprinting, yes? A reprinting in order to change a particular paragraph in one section, right? So I think we'll explore, just from a cost point of view, what would make sense. And the second clarifying piece that I need is, who would be your point of contact? I mean, we can draft some language, but... I mean, we can draft some language, but you may feel, well, it doesn't say it the way you want it. So how, how are we going to work through the nitty-gritty of this so we get it done?
How about you draft the language, you send it to Mr. Suso, and he'll disseminate it to the board?
Okay. All right.
Would that be, I think that would probably be the best serve, and Julian can kind of look at, look at how that would be worded, and maybe give some suggestions to the board, and the board can give some feedback to him as well.
Okay. What I heard you say was, I don't agree with the financing plan. What I understand you to mean by that is, you don't agree that the windows of opportunity should be devoted entirely to wastewater. Is that a correct statement?
I don't think that we should put in writing, with all due respect, I don't think I will be here, and I don't know, maybe you're a lot healthier than I, at the end of these 40 years or 50 years when this plan is done. Someone is going to pick this up. And the other point is, I don't like addendums, and I don't like things that change. This is a plan, we are, this is the first copy of it. I would like it in the original plan, because very often, when you start going back through, addendums get lost. So this is going to be the base plan we're going to work about, work on. And I, it, bottom line is, we are going to have to bond each and every one of these items, whether we're going to have a betterment or not.
Yes.
Stating the fact of a window of opportunity in my eyes, even though you folks may come forward about a window of opportunity at a given time, is a great scenario. But stating it in the plan that we're going to use windows of opportunity, to me, is superfluous, is not necessary. I don't know why we need to tell the state that we're going to use windows of opportunity to bond this program.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a reason why it might make sense to make the statement. And that is that originally, the plan was, here's the problem that needs to be taken care of, however you're going to do it, and you need to just go ahead and fund it. What this says is, the town of Falmouth will look at working on this environmental problem when we have the opportunities. We're not going to look at doing bonding during the times that we don't have the opportunities. So that, that is a significant statement to make to the state. It's, it's basically saying, we'll do what we can when we can.
Are you saying justification for taking a step-by-step process?
That's, that's correct. It's, it's clear to me, and would be to any citizen, that the town has other needs, so that the window of opportunity gets shared with wastewater and other things. But, but if you, if you just take out all of this financing plan and don't mention windows of opportunity, you basically have taken away one of the statements that the town has made, which is, we're, we're not going to be put on a schedule where you must sewer a peninsula every five years, because we just can't find them. We can't fund it.
Well, and you just summarized what my thoughts are, that we may have some windows of opportunity that we can share with other needs of the community.
Fine. That we can do.
Okay?
Yep.
Because I think that would be a fair stand.
Exactly.
This is actually sort of a radical approach. In other towns, what they've done is they've paid their consultants $2 or $3 million, and come up with a plan that says, you have to sewer A, B, C, D, and E, and it's going to cost you $140 million. And they would just hand it to the voters and say, do you want to do this? And the voters would all come back and say, by four or five to one, no way. You know? So we started right out by saying, we're never going to go to the voters and ask them to raise the taxes. We are going to go to the voters when these, these windows so-called appear, and that would be the time we'd go to them and ask for funding of these projects and other projects. And that's, that's a radical difference from almost every other town's experience. And we did that as much for the town, to explain to the town how this could work, as to the state, you know?
Okay, Pat? I'm going to get to public comment. You have a lot, lot side of you.
You could do that in Chatham, but not in Yarmouth, and certainly not here. But in section 7.2.1, which is, or 7.2, which is the financing plan, and in that, in that first section, the second paragraph really speaks to the issue of the retiring old debt. It doesn't say use all of it. It says it's available, but I think what Kevin is suggesting, that it be more clear to say that it will be used in that perhaps, or the opportunity is there to...
In conjunction with other, with the other needs of the town.
With other town projects, yeah. And I think that would, that would take care of it, wouldn't it?
I don't have a problem. It's, we all realize that this is one of our needs, but it's not our only need in this community. Okay? Okay. Can I open it up to public comment? Does anyone else have any questions first? Mr. Fenner, and then I'll get to you.
Mark Fenner, Precinct 6. And your issue, Kevin, I, I think you're trying to be a little too finite, when kind of the overarching part of this plan is that there's adaptive management. And as we go along, we can improve, adjust, or whatever, and I don't think there's any reason to say that that can apply to the financing as well. I think the idea of this thing is to keep it as loose and give us as many opportunities as possible to pursue as many avenues. And I mean, like I said, I think you're trying to be a little too finite on something that's just a draft and is kind of loose and malleable.
And just in response to you, I find in government, when you put things in writing, not in speech, that, that when you talk about issues two years down the road, the translation gets changed, but when they're in writing, the translation doesn't get changed. So at least we all would be on the same page.
Well, that would kind of be the only part of it that would be that tight, because the rest of it is, like I said, kind of loosey-goosey isn't the word. I was going to use ambiguous earlier, but Brent already used it. But in my mind, that's a good thing. But that's my mind, too.
Well, I just want to say, Mark's absolutely right, because one of the great values of this plan is its flexibility. How's that, Mark? Is that a good word? Because I think it really does. It does allow for that kind of flexibility to, to make changes.
Okay. Hilda?
Mr. Chairman, if I, while we're waiting for her to approach the microphone, I would like to congratulate Mr. Fenner for a decidedly positive comment.
Wendy Knight?
I would have rounded applause for that. Kill it.
Hilda Menge. First of all, I would recommend to turn the thermostat up and save energy. I mean, this is not good for a town that tries to be green.
We've been here all night. It's just keeping us awake. We're going to be here for another hour and a half, too.
It's, we're all shivering, and it's not needed. I mean, that's, that's just how we, our town is trying to conserve. I was disappointed not to find the plan online. It was promised, it was promised to be online by Wednesday night or Thursday. I haven't seen it yet. And it's really hard for, for the citizens to have good comments if we don't have the plan in front of us. As far as the debt exclusion is concerned, I think that whole schedule is faulty, because the ecosystem, the estuaries do not run parallel to debt exclusions. We should not fix our estuaries when we have the money. Everybody agrees they need to be fixed yesterday. And here, we are going to make a plan that is only fixing things as we have money, which makes the estuaries worse and worse and worse, and it's going to cost more and more and more, because we have a plan that's going to do it whenever we have money. And I just wanted to make sure that, your recommendation, that it's going to be changed in some manner, but that we start to be more serious about doing things quicker in a very different way. We have a very different world that we are facing, and we cannot keep going the same manner that we always have been. And that might mean that people have to adjust to different ways of living, but this is not a plan that's going to help the estuaries, and that's what we are for, for here, and the fresh ponds eventually. And I have not seen the plan, but I've heard that it says that we are going to sewer certain portions of Little Pond. I would like to change that wording, and we consider sewer-ing as one of the options for Little Pond, and not say that we are going to, because it doesn't give enough time for the demonstration projects to hold, to, to, to show results, so that we can have the adaptive management take place also for that section of Little Pond. Just to say, it is the cheapest, is not true, because we have no numbers on any of the other systems. So to state that we are going to do it, as you said, once it's written, people expect that's what we're going to do. If we say, we consider it, then there is that flexibility of adaptive management built in there. I would highly recommend that that wording gets changed. Again, I don't have the exact wording, because I don't have the plan in front of me. I'm trying to kind of figure it out as I was sitting there. So and that, again, is the flexibility that we should have in the plan, including Little Pond, because the DEP does not state that you have to have a sewer in order to meet the TMDL. It's not needed. And I heard from Paul Nitswitzky, from the Cape Cod Commission last Saturday, and I went to, to two of his talks, that sewer-ing, sewer plants are unsustainable. He says they're unsustainable. So why increase the sewer plan, plant, if even the Cape Cod Commission thinks that they're unsustainable? So I think we should not continue on that same route till we see how the other ones work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, right up.
Can I just give you these?
Sure. Whatever you'd like.
What's in front of you is what they call Site 7, and that's the one that they have discussed. I haven't seen the report that, that you have in front of you, but Site 7's been mentioned time and time again as one of the alternatives that they're going to...
Can you identify who you are?
I'm sorry. Patricia Hanley. Seven-ten, Thomas Landers Grove.
Okay, thank you.
And this, that is a picture of, oops, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's Site 7, and my property is a budding net. And when you see the seven-ten on that diagram, that's my house. So in this report, in this draft that you have in front of you, I don't think it's mentioned that this is a residential agricultural area. And I think maybe that should be addressed. And whatever problems might come up as a result of that, being beside a residential piece of property, I think they're planning on an infiltration beds. You know, what's the, is it going to be an odor? Is it going to be noise? Is it going to be flooding? So that's just my concern, as in a butter.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. I'd like to thank you very much, and hopefully we can make some changes and bring this back before the board next week, if, if it's possible. If not, we'll let it for the week after. It'll be in your hands. How about that? Okay? Thank you ver, yes, Mr. Rapp.
On behalf of the board, I will apologize for the fact that this report did not get up onto the webpage. We did have every intention, and it was a breakdown of getting all the backup for this document together, organized, and loaded up. The three of us are sitting over here with a little bit of red-faced embarrassment that that didn't happen. We'll, we'll rectify that.
I also thought there was a computer issue with the town that since...
I'm not going to blame the town's computer issues.
Well, it was down.
We could have gotten it on before the town went down, if we had gotten everything together in time. It's just, things happen. It's a valid comment. We've tried really hard to get things up and post it available. We've tried to work on that transparency thing, and this was just a breakdown at the worst possible moment for getting all that information up there. We'll take care of it.
Sounds good. If we can take a brief five-minute recess, Mrs. Flynn would like to, and I think the rest of the board could stand up, could stand to take a little break. We've been here with an executive session. So recess for five minutes, and then come back. So recess for five minutes, and then come back.[272.58]
At Marina Park behind the bandshell, rather than on the grass in front of the bandshell, which would be the other park at Marina Park. You could, I would just surmise you could either do that for Wednesday, Thursday on the other lot, or you could also have use Friday, Saturday on the entire property.
I understand. Thank you.
No, so it's up to you what you want to request.
What I'd like to do is that the bigger the rides that we need to put over by, on the north side of the bandshell, that field, which I marked, marked it off today and measured it, is a high, 200, approximately 270 feet long from the bandshell to the north entry of the Marina Park, and 152 wide from the street up to the curb, as in east and west. I've been to the bandshell many a times with my grandchildren because I have a boat right there. And I know that anywhere, sometimes they'll have anywhere from 75 to 175, 200 people there. What I'm asking, since I didn't know all this, this was going down, was I'm wondering if I could have 150 feet on the north side of that property to set up early, because it does, it takes more than one day to set up the show, and use the show on just Friday and Saturday night. And give them about 120 feet by 150 feet.
So you'd, you'd, you'd be looking to set up, and then you wouldn't be operating the carnival during the night that they're going to have the band concert, but my question is, how about safety and things of that nature around the equipment?
That's a good question. We'll ask.
Mr. Larry Cushing.
Hey, I'm Larry Cushing, Cushing Amusements. We carry all kinds of fence that we normally put around the rides, so it's, it wouldn't be unusual to all our rides to be all fenced off, so nobody can really get out of the rides. And if it's, if it's needed, we can actually stand out there and supervise and make sure that nobody goes near the equipment, so that would be a problem.
What's, what's the board's thoughts on this? There's a lot of stuff going on in this community during that period.
Could you describe some of the, the rides or the equipment that you're going to have there?
We're probably looking at about 10 to 12 rides, mostly, mostly kitty rides. For example, like what they call the dizzy drag, and the kids go inside, and it's a big drag, and they spin around in a circle. We don't have, in other words, if you go to the Barnstable State Fair, it's not going to be all those big, big rides like the Barnstable.
Carousels and all that?
Well, there won't be a merry-go-round, but mostly kitty rides, and maybe three or four kids, three or four rides to, you know, allow the, the older children to be able to ride, you know, like the, say the 10 to like maybe 14, 15 years old, like a roundup, possibly, what we call a casino. But like I said, there, there'll be like maybe three or four rides that will adhere to their needs, and mostly more kitty rides than anything.
But something you could actually fence off?
Yeah, yeah, everything is all fenced, in other words, by, by state law, see, every week when we set up our amusements, we're inspected by the state every single week. It's like, right before, right, right after, if we get in, if we wind up being able to set up our show here, right after this, we go to Martha's Vineyard. My family's been going over to Martha's Vineyard for 40 years now, and we're usually all the people you see running down to the talk, you know, the day of the parade, the road race, I'm sorry, the road race. In fact, I usually have to make plans with the, with the steamship authority to make sure that we can get in, how many I can bring in, so that I'm out of the way of the road race, and, and there's no issues. But like I said, it's just, what we're going to bring in there is not a lot of the rides that you would find at, like the Barnstable Fair, it's not the great, big, big rides. It's, it's more rides that are, more of just what they call general family rides. So like I said, more on the kitty ride type style.
Good. And so that what you would set up that night and fence, that would be what you would have for Thursday, or Thursday, or Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be adding more rides after, on Friday morning, or something like that?
Well, I, I.
You might?
I would, I would add some more afterwards to fill in the space or impose the bandstand. But we'd put up, at least, at least if I'm allowed to put up X, or be able to go so far, at least once the, once they're done with the, with the concert, we could come in and then finish up, so that we, we would be, we would be prepared for an inspection the next morning.
Oh, I'd say.
Because everybody said, everywhere we go, everywhere we go, the state comes out and they do inspections every single week. In fact, actually Massachusetts is probably the most difficult state in the country to actually operate kind of work, because of the inspections that they have.
Well, I think that would work.
So you're looking to just operate on Friday and Saturday?
That's correct.
The setup would be Wednesday, Thursday, which you would leave space?
Possibly Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and get everything all ready, so that when the concert is done Thursday night, once everybody's cleared out, and there's nobody there, we would bring in the rest of the equipment, set it up, to be prepared to be open for Friday night.
The, the only thing that I would ask is, is that there is parking around the bandshell, and if you have any vehicles that evening, that you bring them to the opposite end of that property?
Sure, whatever, that would be fine.
Because those folks who go to the concerts would, would in fact, many of them are, are seniors in this community, and they would like parking adjacent to that. And I know a lot of them sit in their cars and watch the concert. Anyone else have any comments here in the board? Go ahead.
I'm not sure, posted, basically, it's about 250 feet from the bandshell.
Yeah, approximately 250 feet on the north side of the bandshell to the curb cut on the north side, 250 feet by 152, we walked it off today.
It's, it's a minor thing, but I think it needs to at least be not more than 50%. I think that for the band to think they've lost more than 50% of what they usually have will run them hardship to.
So you want to make a motion that they keep it within 50% of that before?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I'll move that we grant the permit, starting on Tuesday evening, and no more than 50% of that lot until after the band concert on Thursday night, and then Friday and Saturday for the performances.
Okay. Maybe you want to put a caveat in there for liability insurance? Do you have liability insurance?
Yes.
Okay, requirement of liability insurance?
Yeah, which, which we normally add, whatever the, the property owner is, and also the sponsor, we add them right to our insurance.
Okay, so that's Doug's motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is memorandum of understanding between the board of, the board of selectmen, the EDIC regarding exploring options on the town landfill, and MOU, the use in the future. Just for disclosure purposes, I am a member of the EDIC as a representative of this board. It is the only actual committee that a member of this board can serve on, so I just wanted to make the public aware that I am also a member of the EDIC. Mr. Galasso, the chairman of the EDIC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name's Michael Galasso. I'm the chairman of the Falmouth EDIC, and with me this evening is Bill Vent, he's one of our members. I first would like to thank the town manager and town council for working with us over the last few months on the memorandum of understanding. We originally submitted a request back in April to study the redevelopment, the potential redevelopment of the landfill, and it was suggested at that time that we meet with the, with the town planning staff and the DPW to discuss the potential issues associated with redeveloping the property. We have had those meetings, and both departments agree that now is an appropriate time for us to start the planning for the reuse and redevelopment of the landfill. Our request this evening is for a three-year memorandum of understanding with the town to study the potential redevelopment and reuses of the landfill, with the goal to generate income for the town in the future. We will form a subcommittee consisting of members of the EDIC, the DPW, the energy committee, and any other committee in town that's interested in looking at potential reuses for the property. We'll report back to you every 120 days or sooner, and although our request is for a three-year memorandum of understanding, we plan on having a plan back to you for your consideration before then. This is the first of many partnerships that the EDIC and the town hope to enter in, in the near future. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it's very clear, and I think it outlines the, the purpose and how you expect to move it forward, so I don't have any questions.
I, I think it's important to note that nothing can be done at that location with the DEP permit for a number of years forward, but the town plan of Brian Curry thought it was appropriate to start planning at this point in time, not wait until the end of that, that permitting cycle, when in fact you could do something with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just comment, I want to thank Mr. Galasso and all the members of the EDIC for their diligent efforts to, to bring this to closure, and their timing could not be better. And as town manager, I look forward to working with them in this endeavor and applaud their efforts. Thank you.
So do I have a motion from the board?
I move approval.
Motion?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment? Mr. Finer.
Yeah, just a simple question. This, this represents the, the capped area of the old landfill. None of the waste management facility has its, bound it now, or whatever. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, also, was it?
There is part of, that, part of that facility is in fact capped as well. It's a different cap.
Yeah.
But this represents the area outside of that.
Yeah, okay, that's right. Now, I actually know a little bit about the caps. I worked on a hazardous waste site last year. But also, was there not some sort of boundary dispute on some part of that land, which was actually on, they had capped over onto someone else's property, and was that not in litigation? Has that been settled, or?
That's been settled.
That was before town meeting. The town took that property, and it actually did a friendly take.
Swap, or taking.
So they took that piece of the property and assumed the responsibility of that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, there was no litigation on that?
There was.
That was strictly a negotiated settlement, and as you noted, a friendly taking.
Right. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next up is a discuss and vote, vote of the grant application gift acceptance policy. This is a draft the board has. There are some suggestions that Mr. Suso made today, some possible changes. In front of the board also is Article Four that Mr. Suso passed out. One of the suggestions I had today when I was talking to the town manager was in fact, in Article Four, if you go down near the end, "Further, the board of selectmen shall advise the finance committee of such anticipated costs prior to public hearing." I would think that we would hope that the finance committee would also include the, not only the board of selectmen, but the school committee, because the school committee very often does grants as well. So we can't change Article Four right now. This is part of our policy, but as we come down the pike, I would hope that the finance committee would also look at that issue as well. Yes?
Actually, it would be the responsibility of the school committee to initiate that, because they have exclusive control over their own policies. So we couldn't, and we couldn't include them in our policy, and the finance committee couldn't impose anything upon them, so.
Right, that's correct. But this was an article that was put forward by the finance committee originally?
So you're suggesting that the article in coming years be amended?
Right, that the finance committee starts that, that, that talk. In regard to the grant application, the, pardon me, the grant policy, has anyone got any comments that they'd like to make on this? The only comment that I wanted to make was, on the second to last paragraph, "The board of selectmen shall include the notice for approval and a summary of actions for a regular meeting of the board, or take any other action deemed appropriate, and the application notice will be forwarded to the finance committee as is designated." I'd like to change that process, that the application and the notice will be submitted to the finance committee and/or the finance director for recommendations to the board of selectmen, and then brought to the board of selectmen. I think the board of selectmen doesn't really have as much investigative power. I would think that the finance director and the finance committee would be able to make some kind of recommendations for us. It's up to the board's thoughts here.
Yeah, I think, I agree. I mean, rather than have them come in front of us, this is just 1,000% better than what we were doing, and I'm very happy.
Which is nothing, so.
I mean, we talk about schools.
More than 1,000.
No, I mean, we talk about, the schools have 44 grants that are going to sunset. And where is that money going to come from? We'd have no knowledge of them, and nor does the finance committee finds out later. But I, this is why I think, we've got to think, we think regionally to save money. I think all these departments need to get together, and if it's more cooperation from the school committee, I mean, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, but 44 grants are a lot of grants when you're talking personnel that are all going to sunset, and all that free money from the federal government drives up. But this is something I've been pushing for, and I'm glad this has happened, Mr. Chairman.
One, one other issue that Mr. Suso brought up today, and I think the board needs to at least address this, in our discussions, is very often the fire department, the police department will get a grant or armor, or something of that nature. I don't know whether that's something the board, whether we want to put a dollar figure on these grants, or whether we want to say that it, it's something outside of apparel, it's up to the board, with, in other words, a grant over the sum of $5,000, $10,000.
Frequently, Mr. Chairman, those are homeland security-related, training-related, and they don't drive any new employees, or, or any new hiring, or any future commitments, but frequently replace public safety kinds of related issues that are already in place, so. Well, I would think that would be something that could be weeded out at the level of the finance director or the town manager, to say, this doesn't, you know, we could be made aware of it, but I think we're really looking for the ones that are coming in, and all of a sudden, two years to go down the road, we've got to come up with $30,000 or something, you know, but the finance committee felt like they're being left out.
Right, and I agree with the, the scenario when I said the finance committee and/or the finance director, in a lot of these situations, the finance committee is not going to want to talk about buying four sets of armor for the police department.
Absolutely.
That came from a grant.
Well, you know, the language of the article is very clear. It says that the selectmen shall hold a public hearing prior to the board's acceptance if the grant requires the town to meet future conditions or requirements, such as anticipated costs. So if it's something like armor, and there are no costs, then it wouldn't even have to come before the selectmen, because it says that there has to be a determination, a determination made that there would be future costs. And usually, people won't even accept the grant if there's going to be future costs, but they might want to do it anyway, and that's when it would go through the process.
Right, but I think.
It's not every grant.
And I agree with you, and I think the finance director and/or the, would be able to make that, that conclusion. If you're buying a vehicle, there's going to be future costs, because you're going to maintain it, you've got to insure it, you've got to register it, so that's future cost, so. I, I think we can work out the devil in detail and bring this back.
Yeah, there's, there's one other, in the last paragraph, it says, "After the award, but prior to the acceptance," I'm leaving some words out, "the applicant shall notify the finance committee and seek its review and referral." Referral to whom? I think it should be clear as to what that means. Doesn't really say.
Okay, so why don't, does anyone have any other?
The referral needs approval.
Right.
Referral?
I think that's how it is.
Mr. Chair, I, I thought the whole reason was, you have a department head comes in, and he says, "Look, I get a grant I can get for $25,000." The proper procedure would be, and this article has been on town meeting, even though I spoke, people thought it was new, it's been on there for years, Winnie Woods had something to do with it back in the 80s. So anyway, it would have something to do like, a department head comes in, maybe the grant is $20,000, that, and the finance committee felt like they were being left out, he could take his explanation, get in front, on the agenda in front of the finance committee, and they would either go along with it or not, and the referral would come to us. But I mean, I don't need, if you need a referral after it's been approved, because.
No, I, I, that's why I said I think it should go to the finance committee and/or the finance director, and then come to us for approval.
Right.
We only need to see it once.
Right.
At the end.
The finance committee, us, and then, yeah.
That's it.
It's not trying to make it hard for anybody. It's a matter of so many grants out there that all of a sudden summer's sunsetting, and the finance committee was not aware that, gee, we're going to come up with extra money. And that's just all in planning.
I think the town manager gets the discussion.
How about we do it this way? If anyone has any other comments on this? We funnel into Mr. Suso, and then we come back with the final draft?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
I'm just glad we're doing it. Thank you.
All right. That's all, is that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, approved minutes of meeting on June the 25th.
I'll have to look at this again. I move approval of the minutes of June 25th.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
You can't, you're absent at that time.
Oh, that would help.
He was?
Well, actually, you're absent at the beginning of the vote to go into executive session, so I guess you can't.
Yeah.
You can't, I'm sorry.
I was there. I thought I was there.
Yeah, but I don't know why she has, do you want to amend that?
Absent for vote.
The vote to go into executive session.
You were, you were absent for the roll call vote to go into executive.
It was the one, yeah. Came in, we were talking about the alcohol, the scrap and the.
So perhaps that needs to be amended to say absent for vote to enter executive session. But otherwise, I'll second it with the corrections.
Yes, and, okay, and then we can approve them, but then we should also exclude the executive session minutes from.
Well, yeah, we're going to take one at a time. This is the regular session.
Right, okay.
Yeah, are you following us, this on the minutes of the, of the 25th? Under the first section of those minutes, it says, "Who is President Chairman Murphy called the meeting to order, and a motion was made." The, you have absent for vote was Brent Putnam, and even up above, well, up above, you do have Brent Putnam was, was, was present, so it's absent for vote to go into executive session.
Did Brent Putnam enter at 6:25?
That'd be great.
That's what it says now, yeah.
That's what it says on the executive session.
Okay, okay.
I'll give it a vote.
So it's motion and a second, as, as a minute. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is the minutes of the meeting for July the 9th. This was the interdepartmental transfers?
Well, I wanted to, if you go about, a little more than halfway down the page, where it starts with Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
It says Chairman Murphy further explained. I, I wanted to say Chairman Murphy, in response to a question by Mark Fineran, further explained, because otherwise it makes no sense why, why explaining.
Sure.
So I would just add that, in response to a question by.
I don't have those, because I didn't have those minutes.
Oh, you didn't have them? Okay, well, we'll, we'll take care of.
Okay.
And with that, I remove approval of the minutes.
And not to release?
And not to release.
This was an executive.
Oh, this was not executive session?
This was not executive session?
No.
Okay.
That was just the transfers.
Okay, so motion and a second. We cut her out of the one easy night, and we didn't let her?
There was a conflict.
Oh. Okay, so the motion with the correction in the second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes of June the 25th, this is executive session minutes?
Yes. I move approval of the minutes of June 25th and not release them.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? All right, we'll move to summary of actions.
Didn't you just vote to exclude the full executive session minutes?
Nope.
Nope.
They're all executive session.
Yeah, there was only one executive session. Yeah, sorry. Summary of actions, I'll get down the list if someone wants to hold one of these. Approved request for payment of the library donation account. Approved request for payment of Beach Department donation account. Approved request for a one-day liquor license, I'll hold that. Approved visiting nurses association, Town of Falmouth, nursing services contract for Number five, consideration of ratification of Falmouth Patrolmen's Federation contract. Number six, approve for eight one-day liquor licenses, I'll hold that. Number seven, approve request for one-day liquor license, I'll hold that. Number eight, approve request for one-day liquor license, I will hold that. Number nine, approve request for one-day liquor license, I will hold that. Number 10, approve request for a special event, Striper Fest, Marina Park, 9/27.
29.
9/29/13?
12.
12.
12, I'm sorry. Would you like to hold that, or would you speak on that? It's up to you.
Do you have any questions on the other ones?
Did you want to talk about the area? That's what I was going to say. So we'll hold that.
I have any questions?
Okay, so we'll hold that. Approved request for Sunday entertainment, Barnstable County Agricultural Society. Approved request for a special event, Falmouth Walk. Approved request for a special event, Main Street Mile on 9/9/12. Request for a wedding permit, Paylot, Old Silver Beach, 7/20/2012. Request for a wedding permit, Wedmore Richardson, Menard Beach, 7/17/2012. Number 16, request for a wedding permit, Van Carrison, Old Silver Beach, 8/23/12. Number 17, accept easement of Water, Water Main Extension, Dartmouth Court. Number 18, vote to accept donation from the Falmouth Road Race Committee, the Falmouth Fire Department donation account, in the amount of $22,399.
$23,000.
Three, yeah, $23,399. Hold that.
Yes, please.
Okay. Number nine, vote to appoint Brian Curry as the town interim representative of the Cape Cod Commission. Okay, so we're going to vote on number one. Number two. Number four. Number five. Number 11. Number 12. Number 13. Number 14. Number 15. Number 16. And number 17. Do I have a motion?
19?
No, he, he held, oh.
No, 19?
Oh, number 19, I'm sorry.
19, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, approved request for a one-day liquor license. Just want to make a disclosure on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. This is for the Cape Cod Health Care at Highfield Hall on 7/21/12. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Number six, request for eight one-day liquor licenses, Seacoast Shores Association, 7/19/21 and 7/26 to 28. Motion of disclosure on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Quick question?
Yes.
I thought we had done this one?
With, and, and just for the board's information, this is a brand-new facility. They wouldn't have time to apply for a liquor license to the state and get it back for the season, so they've taken the option to apply for, they have a maximum of 30 one-day liquor licenses in any given calendar year, so they're going to try to use those 30 one-day licenses this season, and come back before the board in September and apply for a full liquor license. This would be the only way they'd get use of that facility with alcohol this season. Okay?
Thank you.
I move approval. I move approval.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Number seven, request for a one-day liquor license Samaritans on 7/22/12. I am the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Do I have a motion?
Is it 7/22 or 9/22?
9/22, I'm sorry. Numbers are just flying together on me.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Next is approved request for one-day liquor license, Gourmet Caterers, 8/25/12. I am the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Do I have a motion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
I have to find the caterers. Usually, caterers get their licenses from the state.
They can get a beer and wine license.
Oh, for one day?
And that's what this is for. It's not for full alcohol. And it's at the Barnstable County Fairgrounds.
Oh, okay, thanks. And move approval.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, approved request for one-day liquor license, Striper Fest Marina Park, 9/29/12. I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. I would ask that anybody who makes this motion require that they have a controlled area for the alcohol as well as liquor liability insurance, which is...
Just a question, sir?
Yes. Yeah, go right ahead.
For the record, I'm Chris Ming and the owner and publisher of On the Water Media Group in a Falmouth resident on Falmouth Landing Road. If I was to amend that, is it possible to do that on a two-day? And my concern would be that we have a lot of sponsors that come in on the... The setup will probably occur on Wednesday and Thursday. We usually, last year, we piggybacked with the Vipps Group for the Feast of Falmouth. This year, I understand they've moved to the spring, so we won't be piggybacking with them. As far as the tent setup, we'll probably have Tila Rental setting it up on Tuesday, Wednesday. In working with our sponsors in the past, one of the things they like to do is, because it's a big infrastructure there, is to have a two-day event as far as just demo rides on the harbor. I work with Greg Fraser as far as having Yamaha boats that folks can come down. Budweiser will have the trailers and everything in place on probably Thursday. And one of the things that we were looking at entertaining would be seminar series where anglers could come down in the tents and start to, you know, have educational seminars that'll help them with fishing. If it's a problem, we'll leave the beer trailers closed. If it's not a problem, I would love to amend that to see if we can include Friday afternoon as far as beer being served on Friday and Saturday, the day of the actual event, Striper Fest.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You just merely fill out the paperwork and we put it on the summary of actions the next meeting?
Yeah, no problem. I can do that.
Because I don't think it would need the open meeting law requirement to amend this.
So you just want to table that?
No, we'd take up this license tonight.
Okay.
And then you would...
Just submit for a Friday as well. That'll be great. I'll do that then.
For the application for the event also, additional liquor license.
We would extend the event as well on Friday as well with that amendment.
Right, because the event ended right now. It's just for Saturday and Sunday.
That's right.
Okay, move approval.
So move approval with controlled area as well as...
As well as the liability insurance.
Liquor liability insurance. Second, wait a second?
Second.
Just remember, I think I said the disclosure on the hold of an all-alcoholic...
Yes, you did.
All those in favor?
Hundred times.
Aye, hundred times, I'm sorry. I'll make sure. Next one up is approved request for a special event, Striper Fest Marina Park. Chris, do you want to talk about this a little bit? You wanted to use a little bit of the parking lot as well?
That's what I was hoping to do, and let me just, I'm going to pass you this real quick. There's, I made up two of these. I'll kind of give you a rough one of this. And then I'll also give you each, I think there's one here for the band shell. And then this is kind of cut out of that map as well. Just so that I can clarify what we're trying to achieve here. Thank you. If you're looking at the overlay of the map there, what I was hoping to do was the parking lot to the east of the band shell layout area in green there, which would be the parking area between the Falmouth Harbor and the actual band shell, excuse me, band shell area that we're using as our footprint. I was hoping to limit traffic through there. Last year, we had a steady flow of customers coming in. And we tried to route them away from that main road there and in past the, which would be the east side of that. And I would really like to limit any traffic through there from a safety factor. We've also grown a little bit this year as far as our sponsors. We have a boat company last year that brought a couple of boats. We're hoping to have 12 this year, six in the water, six on the field here. And I would like to just kind of limit the amount of traffic that goes through there for safety reasons. Last year, we had some folks driving through, and I think it's more out of curiosity. What we also tried to do is on the northeast corner, we tried to limit an area there for all of the charter boat folks that have charters going on on that Saturday. We tried to limit, which would be, if you look at the emergency exit fire lane down at the northeast entrance, I know it's pretty small there, that would be the corner there. If anyone was going down to the charter boat row to take a trip for the day, that's where most of those folks would park. So we tried to leave that area for the charter boat folks and then limit the other end of the parking area there, if that wouldn't be a problem. We've worked out with the Island Queen in the past, with Helen at the rec center. And one of the things we're going to try to work out is with the Lawrence School to see we can use parking over there and then run a shuttle to and from, just to limit the amount of traffic that comes down that road during the actual event. We've also spoke with some of the folks over at the parking facility by the friendlies in that area and the back area of that parking lot last year. They used some of that and they actually welcomed the business because many of them ended up at your friendlies and some of these other places for dinner that evening.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I move approval.
A motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is vote to accept donation for the Falmouth Road Race Committee, Falmouth Fire Department donation account, the amount of $23,399. Brent?
Yeah, I had asked for this because we had, back in April, and I see we have some of the correspondence from April, including the minutes when we had questioned, you know, looking the gift horse in the mouth, so to speak. And I see here, according to the Town Manager, that the FinCom has given their blessing.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Both the chief and I met with them subsequent to the board's meeting, and FinCom did concur moving forward.
All right, I just wanted to confirm that before we took the vote. I have no objections on those that we approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And we would all agree that constitutes a public hearing on this grant.
Well, we did already have one as well.
That's not a grant. It's a gift.
It was published so that if there was any public comments or more, we'll hold that as well. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, that concludes our agenda tonight. Very healthy agenda and a great job by the board. Mr. Suso, Town Manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items. I wanted to congratulate Bob Ripley, who's been voted as a new Chair of the Finance Committee for the coming year at their recent meeting this past week. I do look forward to working with Bob in this new capacity. I do want to thank also outgoing, longtime Finance Chair Gary Anderson for his fine work. It's been a pleasure working with him during my short tenure here as Town Manager. Gary will continue in a capacity of serving as co-Vice Chair. We look forward to that as well. Also, just an advance notice to the board regarding the annual meeting of the International City County Managers Association. I would anticipate bringing you some additional information for you to consider at your meeting weekends as far as potential approval for my attending that annual event, which is noted in my agreement with the board as one of three sessions that I would bring to the board for your consideration. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to, we had a meeting, I should go into a selectmen's report, but we had a meeting this past Thursday with Mr. Suso, myself, Gary Anderson, Ray Jack, about the possibility of looking at capital that, you know, was defeated this year in the town election. And one of the suggestions that came from Mr. Anderson and we concur it, is the potential of coming up with some form of capital committee, you know, with representation from the Board of Selectmen. We did have a good capital committee that was already started the groundwork, and we could get some of those members and try to work forward as we would. So I'd be putting that on as a future agenda item to potentially come up with some folks who are interested in serving on this capital subcommittee with some of the members that have already worked from the Finance Committee and this professional staff.
And the purpose would be to generate support for the ballot question, or no?
Well, there is no ballot question at this point in time. Making sure that we can fund this and potentially looking at how we're going to fund capital in the future. Because we still have those needs.
Oh, so is this a different capital advisory committee? No, I guess I'm not clear.
That was a subcommittee of the Finance Committee.
Right, capital advisory committee.
Advisory Committee. And they would much prefer that this be a committee of the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I see.
So that's what the Board of Selectmen, they would, they would not mind representing, be representatives of that committee. But they thought it would be best served that the leadership of this committee take the charge of putting that committee together.
So it would be a new committee?
It would be a new committee.
A capital project advisory committee or something like that?
Something in that form or fashion. Any other selectmen reports? Yes, Dr.?
Some very brief items. One is some invitations I was fortunate enough to accept. I threw out the first pitch at the Congress game in July, the Saturday before the 4th of July. Was pleased to represent the Board of Selectmen there and was also able to enjoy the invitation from the Mashpee Wapakonaux at their powell on that Sunday after that. And then this afternoon, met with the committee that is looking into bringing a community pool into town and was able to answer some questions they had and at least express my personal views of not representing the Board of Selectmen but passing a question about the possibility of creating a pool.
That's a very interesting proposal. And there's some competing interests because there's a group together that is trying to bring the YMCA to Falmouth as well. So there's two separate groups. One way or the other, I hope we could get a pool out of it.
This group is meeting with the YMCA also and should work together.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I met with the same group today as well on the idea of, but it's more of a wellness center. It's more, the pool being part of it, but a wellness center, meaning a gym, and also the fact that we, the fact that we now need a new senior center, that it could be partnered with a senior center. And they actually had a video of a place that was built down in Texas that, it was amazing. Well, I think it covered something like 10 or 14 acres of land. But there was a banquet hall that people could use and rent. Then there was a senior center. Then there was this major pool place that was, it's not like the pools that we are used to, which is just, you know, a pool and you jump in and you swim from one end to the other. These pools are amazing. They, there are sections where the weather's, where the water is a little warmer. Not a therapy pool, but slightly warmer. There are lanes, you know, in the bottoms of the pools for people who want to swim and train. There are rock formations where water drips down. I mean, it's fascinating. But it's kind of an interesting concept of how this could meet several community needs if in fact there were such a piece of land and interest in doing something like that. The other thing I wanted to mention was I also attended the M3 Cubed meeting. This is the Military Citizens Group.
Right.
And that was Thursday morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the Cape Cod Commission has been hired to be the contractor to prepare the JALUS, which is a joint land use.
Oh, really?
Yep. And Sharon Mooney is the person in charge. And it's absolutely fascinating, the things that, because, you know, you look at the commanders and they're all great people, you know, the general was there and the PEPAS commander, who is new, and the Army and the Marine Corps, you know, they were all there. And they all gave very interesting reports on what was going on. And the whole idea is to try to connect more closely with the neighboring communities to the base. Sandwich, Warren, Falmouth, Mashpee. Budon was there from the town of Sandwich. And they talked about activities that are occurring in the towns and activities that are occurring on the base. And they, the military, apparently out in California, they have been looking at this through the development of a JALUS, which they have already done, where there's a partnership between or among the military and the communities related to utilities, related to public works, infrastructure projects, water, wastewater. And then they have come up with something called a joint power agreement, which is, I don't mean power in terms of electricity, but power in terms of authority, that they create some joint group that has power to make decisions about whatever these projects are. So it's a pretty interesting thing. So this M3 Cubed group is going to be the policy group for the JALUS and how this goes. So anyway, there's a lot to it, but that's enough for now, I think.
Any other reports from the Board of Selectmen?
No, I haven't signed those.
It's been a while.
Can you bring the...
When you send them back the other way when you're done.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Well, you want, the stack is done.
Yeah, that's what you...
It's like signing mortgages now.
Go ahead.
It's been a while, but Pat and I went to the open house at Channel 13.
Oh, yeah, we did go to that, didn't we?
In fact, it was the same night we did Whitehead's proclamation over at the band shell. And it was, in fact, Julian was even introduced to the public by Jay Savalar at the band shell. And Channel 13, it's unbelievable, the equipment they got over there now. And I would, you know, Pat, wasn't it amazing?
Yes, it was. You really should go over and see Falmouth Community Television.
It's unbelievable.
Since they've, since a new contract has been in place, they have upgraded their equipment. They have upgraded the facilities. It is so much nicer and everything seemed to flow a lot better.
Yeah.
It's very impressive.
The other, just, I'll just quick and pass, and I had some concerns. I had heard concerns about the temporary septic system out at Old Silver Beach, which I brought to Julian's attention. Basically, they kept failing and they had to pump it for a number of consecutive days. And Julian, after I spoke with him, I guess got in touch with the engineering department. They went over there and did some work on it. And although it was pumped nine times, just over $2,000, I guess it's working so far. But according to this, it went off late yesterday afternoon. Again, there's alarm on this, but I guess it was running into a lot of money. But Julian had got in touch with engineering. They went in, cleaned all the sledge out of the tank, treated it with something called ADUX. And evidently, it's working okay so far. But that was a temporary fix that was put in place. The overwhelming attendance at the beach has just been overwhelming. Everything has just, all the porta-johns didn't even do the job. It was just, you know, the weather we've been having. So that was something that I asked Julian to take care of, and he did, and I want to thank him for that. Secondly, it's been a few months since I had heard anything on the funding for the, out of the Messina money, Julian, for a handicap ramp at Falmouth Heights Beach. Something that Frank, we said, was going to look into. And also, if they could possibly open up the license agreement again, because there's a stipulation right in there, if some year down the road, they want to use that money for nourishment of the beach and save the taxpayers $50,000 or $60,000. I mean, that is free money. That wasn't a grant or anything. It was a donation. Just a thought we were going to be working on. I just know Frank's been very busy with everything else, but maybe for the fall, we could find out if that's something we could just get the information on. I'd appreciate it.
Oh, a couple more things I forgot to mention about the base. They are making improvements to the sandwich gate. I don't know how often any of us ever use the sandwich gate. But they're moving it closer into the base so that it isn't, it isn't so much in the residential area. And they're also making improvements to the Falmouth gate so that can be used more frequently by those of us who live in Falmouth so that we don't have to go to the rotary and go in the main gate, depending on where you're going. So they're making those improvements. They are doing some more things with their mission. I asked about the BRAC, you know, the Base Realignment and Enclosure Process, because the Cape Cod Times had a story. Well, even Tim Murray, if you remember, the Lieutenant Governor, was visiting all the bases because he had been notified that there were going to be BRAC reviews on all the bases in Massachusetts. And then they made a statement that they issued a letter saying that Hanscom Air Force Base was approved. It was not going to be part of the BRAC. So when I asked that question of the officers who were there, I said, "So what's the status of the BRAC related to Otis?" And they said, "No, no, no. There is no BRAC for Otis." And I said, "Well, you know, we read in the paper there was..." He said, "No, there's absolutely not a BRAC review at all. It's not going to happen." And he said, "The whole purpose of the BRAC is that they expect that once a review is completed and the changes are made, that they will save money." And he said, "The last BRAC was done in 2007, and they haven't figured out yet whether they saved any money from '07. So therefore, they're not ready to do another BRAC." So there won't be a BRAC review. So that's very positive.
Just one other thing I want to let the board know, that I've scheduled a workshop on August the 20th, which would be a shellfish workshop. We had... We had spoken at one point, had a presentation from the shell fishermen. We're going to try to have a little balanced approach and talk about a bunch of different scenarios that evening. One, of course, would be relays, maybe not necessarily from the Ton River, but as well as constable staffing, things of those nature, concerns from shell fishermen, as well as any other issues that are related to agriculture there. Okay? Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Green Harbor waterfront lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So, visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.